Hold on.
Go on, John.
Good evening. Welcome to the March 13, 2025 North Hampton School Committee meeting. I'm Jean-Luc Shera, Chair of School Committee, and I'll be presiding this evening. This meeting is being held both remotely on Zoom pursuant to the modification of the state's open meeting law for the pandemic and in person here in the community room at JFK Middle School. This meeting and all participating will be audio and video recording, and I will call the meeting into order. And Cassie, will you please call the role of the school committee when you're ready?
Sorry, excuse me, my eye is cused.
Present.
Member Casey.
Here.
Member Feisler Freud.
Here.
Member Sarah F. Cox.
Present.
Member Stein.
I think he wasn't able to be here.
Recording in progress.
Okay, got it. Member Hennessy.
Present.
Member Miller. Mr. C. Member LaBoutte.
Here.
Here.
Member Agna.
Present.
Member Davis.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. We will now be voting to enter executive session, and we will be coming back into open public session from the executive session. So if you are here for the meeting, you'll be put in a waiting room, and then when we're back in open session, we will let you back into the Zoom room, or we will come back into the physical room. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
See, we need to read the actual language that's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, with the exception that allows us to go into.
It took me eight months to figure that out. That was there.
I make a motion to go into executive session per GLC 30A, paragraph 21a3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I second it.
Motion's made by Member Feisler Freud, seconded by Member Agna. The chair does so declare, so we will again be going into executive session after this vote, as long as everyone votes to do it, and we'll come back into open session. Roll call, please, Cassie.
Member Casey.
Yes.
Member Feisler Freud.
Yes.
Member Sarah F. Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein. Member Hennessy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Present.
Yes.
Member LaBoutte.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Now in favor.
Did I say yes? Yes.
Oh, shoot, I forgot to go around.
Okay, so we're, as I said, we're going into executive session, and we will come back into open session after the executive session. Thank you.
Carrie, nice picture. You look so...
Okay, we are back from executive session and moving on in the agenda. We are at school committee norms and Member Wiesenfreund, were you gonna walk us through one of the second item? So last meeting we did utilize brevity, I believe, so.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you for asking me. I thought I could pick my own.
Oh, go for it.
I'm the one that made that mistake.
Sure. Absolutely.
Yeah, Member Agna.
Yes.
Miss led me here.
I did.
So I think that the one I'd like to pick is focus on students at the center. And how does what we're discussing impact all students? And you know, that really appealed to me in my, in my life outside school committee. I'm very involved with infant early childhood mental health activities. And in infant early childhood mental health, which is really just a strange way of saying social emotional development. It's one of the tenets, right? That we always think about the baby or the child at the center of our work. And that as complicated as it gets, as in the weeds as it gets, as numerical as it gets, that we not forget that we're here for the student and the student in his or her web of relationships. So that's what I got.
Thank you. Go ahead, Member LaBounty.
Did we have to reconvene?
I got it.
No. We were adjourning to open session.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us to the student representative report.
Welcome.
Yay. New microphone. So our first update now that we are six weeks into second semester is course selections for grades nine through 11. It's definitely been a stressful time for a lot of students. But next week, we're gonna meet with our guidance counselors. They're coming to classes one-on-one to talk with each student. Next update is something that we've been talking about for many months, which is that tonight is opening night of NHS's spring musical, Hades Town. There are shows tonight through Sunday, all at seven, except for the matinee show, 2:00 PM on Sunday. And Lucia and I are going tomorrow, and we're so excited. NHS puts on amazing productions, so I highly recommend going and supporting our wonderful actors and musicians and theater tech people.
Yeah, and yeah, it's gonna be great. And spring sports have started, for frisbee at least. Frisbee started this week, and next week, all of the other sports will start practices. And some student union things. Last year, student union sponsored a trip to Second Times Attraum, which is a second-hand prom dress organization in Palmer. And many students were able to get their prom dresses for free. Student Union will be doing this again for this coming prom, and that will happen in the next few weeks. And some merch updates is the ordering closed in February, but the merch is going to be here next week. And that's it. So do you have any questions?
Do you know, are there tickets still available to Hades Town? Or is it for the remaining nights?
There are tickets, but they're definitely selling fast, so you should buy them as soon as possible.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, that brings us to public comment, and we're taking public comment in person here at JFK and over Zoom. There's a signup sheet in the community room. For those on Zoom, if you wish to make a comment, please use the raised hand feature. We'll try to alternate between those in the room and those that are on Zoom. And you can always submit a written public comment, which is equally part of the public record, at northampton-school-committee@northampton-k12.us, and it will be sent to all school committee members. Thank you. Before you begin your comment, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. And the school committee does not respond during public comment, as it's the public's time to speak. So while your comments should be directed to the school committee, you'll understand when we don't respond to them. There's a limit of three minutes per person unless language interpretation or accommodations for a communication disability have been requested, in which case the time limit is six minutes. And apologies for last time when that was, I was just trying to get some clarity around what the parameters were around that, which we talked about before. But anyone who requests that can have six minutes. Just let us know ahead of time. And a timer will be set to ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak. You have no obligation to use the full time, but if you do, after the limit's reached, you'll be asked to please finish your sentence. And according to the rules of procedure, the school committee receives public comment for a maximum of 90 minutes. So we are beginning at 7:02. And Paula Reggano, the first name in the room.
Hi, I'm Paula Reggano, Northampton, Mass. Thank you, Mayor. As you know, I'm here to voice my dismay over the handling of the accommodation requests at the last school committee meeting. I hold a bachelor's degree in speech-language pathology and a master's degree in audiology, as well as a certificate of clinical competence from the American Speech, Language, and Hearing Association, and I have over 15 years' experience as an early educational childhood audiologist. On Thursday, February 13th, the school committee public comment session saw 17 people speaking about the crisis in the city's public schools. Two speakers, one of whom is an openly autistic and outspoken city counselor, asked for the communication disability accommodation. If you are not aware, autism often involves communication disorders of varying degrees, including language disorders around social communication. At the end of the meeting, the mayor questioned revisiting the public comment policy that allows for a time accommodation, stating, "We have incorporated into that an accommodation for either someone who needed interpretive services or for a communication disability," which I believe we discussed meant a speech communication disability, which was not how it was used this evening. The mayor then asked Member Gezi to speak to the interpretation of the policy, to which she replied, "I was surprised that they used that particular one, because it didn't seem like their speech problems were problematic. It just seemed to be an extension of time." It is important to understand exactly what a communication disorder is. A communication disorder can be speech-based, like articulation, fluency, like stuttering, for example, or voice disorders. A communication disorder can be language-based, with difficulty in the form, content, and function of language, including social communication. And finally, my area of expertise, hearing disorders, which not only includes hearing loss, but also central auditory processing disorders, which impact one's ability to process, analyze, store, and retrieve auditory information. Speech-based disorders are the most easily identified, as they involve the production of speech sounds and vocal quality. Language and hearing disorders may or may not be obvious, especially in their mildest forms. Thank you to Members Hennessy, Agna, and Wiesenfreund, who stepped up to say it's not their place to question someone's disability, and to the majority of the school committee for not agreeing to move the item onto the next agenda or send it back to the committee. I believe, Mayor Shiara, you owe both constituents an apology. In fact, you owe every constituent, especially those with communication disorders, who struggle daily, an apology. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, in the room, Guwara Jashnani, pardon, excuse me if I mispronounced your name.
No problem. And I noted accommodations on the form, as I did last month. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your time. I'll comment briefly on just a couple of things. Regarding the accommodations policy, I didn't realize other people would be speaking about it as well. But Mayor Shiara, am I saying your name right? And Member Gezi, both disparaged people with disabilities last meeting, specifically me and one other speaker. The mayor is directly responsible, as given our structure of government, for the lack of funding and lack of adequate supports for disabled students. Now she had to show us that not only do our students not deserve basic legally mandated accommodations, but even those of us at public comment don't deserve accommodations. She refused to think during the meeting about ways she could support and fund our schools, which she voted against, but instead held on to her ableist discriminatory comments for three hours to make them at the end of the public portion. I was appalled at both of you and call for both of you to apologize, to both myself and Councilor Rothenberg, for your vile, ableist comments about how we're not really disabled, or not the correct type of disabled, and suggesting we are or not the correct type of disabled, and suggesting we are faking it and just wanted extra time. I also ask that the school committee formally consider censuring both members for their disparaging discriminatory ableist comments about people with disabilities that sounded straight out of the Trump administration's rhetoric. Finally, let me say, I've heard a lot of talk about bullying and insulting demeanor since moving to this town seven months ago, as well as accusations that people like me, who call for more school funding, are lying about what's happening in the schools. So I'll give it to you straight from the horse's mouth. As part of the rebuttal to my DESI complaint to the state about IEP noncompliance, I received material submitted by Matt Holloway, supervised by Superintendent Bonner. He left the recorder on after my January 31 IEP meeting. After the meeting had ended, this was then transcribed and submitted to the state and to me. For one thing, while Matt and others were talking, they insulted me, comparing me to one of their family members, who is, like me, according to them, such a pain in the ass for standing up for their disabled kid. This is in writing, sent to me and the state. They seem to have tried to look up my social media, one of them mentions. They call me one of those "save our schools" people, concerningly indicating their prejudice toward my possible political affiliations during a meeting about services for my child. But most importantly, one of them, who seems to be Matt, I can't tell, because they're all labeled with speaker numbers in the transcript, casually admits general and systematic noncompliance with IEPs as a norm in our school district. He says, or the speaker says, "I do think that the reality of the situation is that we don't always, I mean, we should, but we don't always give kids everything they should get on their IEP." This is a direct quote. "And I think in some way, and this is not a good thing, but in some ways, I do think it's kind of understood that sometimes there isn't coverage, or sometimes there isn't staffing, or whatever. Why isn't there staffing?" But then there are some people, meaning me, who like this come from a different community. I moved from a different town. So he kind of doesn't get it. That's the end of the quote. And then finally, they admit that they are preying on a lack of information to systematically underserve our students and families. Quote, "We have so many, so many families of kids who need so much more, so much more than we give them, and they don't know that they can come in and make a fuss. Because they don't know what their kids need, they don't get services." This is admitted by administrators in our schools on a recording, transcribed and sent to the state, which is also an indicator of potential competence, I think. This is how our administrators talk about us. This is clarity amidst all of the gaslighting and all of the dissemblance and dishonesty that I have seen since moving here. Administrators admitting systematic violations of state and federal disability law, and then submitting it to the state. This is what we have in our schools right now. Is this what you, as the school committee, want us to have for our children? This is not what I want for my children. I don't think this is what you want for our children. You're starting to talk about the budget for next year today, I believe? This is what would happen. This is what would continue with level services. And my understanding is that if we have a 4% budget increase, it will mean further cuts. This is with level services. Administrators saying out loud, "We don't give kids what they need." Everybody knows that. This guy's an entitled jerk, because he thinks that he should get the services the IEP says. Everybody knows that we don't do that. What is this? This is what I discovered yesterday trying to write my DESI rebuttal. This makes me sick. I feel ill. I hope that you can feel a little bit of that, not as much as me, because it's really overwhelming to read that this is what my child is dealing with, and this is what all of our children are dealing with. Every single day, administrators who know what's happening, and because of the lack of funding, can't do anything about it. And I want to be very clear, I don't blame these individuals. I think they're rude at times. But this is about funding. This is about not having the staff. They say that, right? Everybody knows we just don't have the staff. Yeah? I hope you understand what I'm saying. I'm trying to be as clear as possible. I'm a little overwhelmed. But I call on you to please think about this when you're thinking about the budget for next year. I call on the mayor to think about what it means to insult people like me with disabilities in this school committee meeting, and then insult our children by refusing to allow them the services that are legally mandated for them to be able to learn, students like my child. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to make a comment?
Somebody on Zoom.
I don't see a hand.
It's Deborah. Oh, she got her hand up.
Oh, okay. Deborah.
Hold on, I gotta change my background. I'm sorry, you guys.
No, that's a great background.
Sorry, bad mozzies lady. I can't really follow Guara. After that, I think, I did have a comment, I don't even know. I was going to talk about the comments made in the last school committee meeting about accommodations and people with disabilities, so let me try to shorten those a little bit. Here I am again. I'm coming back. I keep coming back. For my soon-to-be-graduating senior, game's over. But in honor of disability advocates before us, who worked tirelessly breaking down barriers for generations like ours that follow them, we stick around and we hope to improve the situations for the students to come after. We're paying it forward. Making public comment here is challenging. It can be a scary place for many students and parents, pushing us out vulnerably in front of our communities, peers, fellow residents, that we will never know. We see you checking mobile phones. We see you rolling your eyes on Zoom, but we risk disdain, harassment, mocking, so other folks can have an easier time in their future and to earn respect and keep bravely making progress. The comments made at the last school committee stating someone's disability, which some of you said, it causes harm. This is the kind of harassment, I'm losing my train of thought, it's the kind of harassment that makes our kids feel the sting of ableism, makes them not want to come and make these comments, it makes them not feel safe. Their IEPs, their transition plans, I hope those of you on this committee know what words I'm talking about. They write goals about advocacy, feeling strong, feeling brave, asking for those accommodations. When our kids see the way that you respond to those things, it makes them feel like less. Sorry, I'm getting here. I ask that during these budget conversations tonight, you take a real look at supporting students with disabilities, and that you consider their needs, rather than just places to cut and recoup dollars. Teachers and staff are dedicated to helping our kids, and they have a severe lack of resources, staffing, overcrowded service groups and delivery groups. The teachers and staff, they're burning out. Their hearts are breaking for themselves, for us, for our kids. They know they're not getting what they're supposed to get, and you guys know this too. So know that they're taking it home and taking it to heart, and I would hope that you guys are with things more than, and I say you guys, I don't mean all you guys. I'm sorry. But it's more than just empty words, you guys. We've got to do something for these kids. And, you know, after the last meeting, I hope it makes a difference. I'm babbling. If Guara's still there, that was incredible, and we're here for you, buddy. All right.
Before you mute, could you please state your name and city or town?
Oh, geez, yeah, I'm Deborah, and I'm from Florence.
Thank you. Deborah Thompson? Is it Tom Thompson? Deborah, could you state your last name?
Sorry, I was nodding at a black camera. Yes.
Thompson, okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Masaborsky.
I live in Northampton. Mayor, I'm gonna speak directly to you. I really hope that after hearing all of those comments, which everyone else that's listening just cannot believe that, you take a moment to give a sincere apology. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any further hands. Anybody else? Okay. Next on our agenda are announcements. Member Gezi, then, go. Okay, I'll start with Member Gezi. And before I move on.
With reference to the comments that we made last school committee meeting by me, I did write an apology to the CPAC community, which I hope the board forwarded and that you got out. If not, I'll read it now. To the CPAC community, near the end of the Northampton School Committee meeting on February 15th, I made a thoughtless comment that questioned whether a speaker during our public comment period had rightfully requested an extension of the three-minute speaking limit offered to those with a communication disability or in need of an interpreter. My words were disrespectful. I offer my sincere apologies. I am saddened to have caused pain and eroded trust across a community that I cared about deeply. As the mother of a child with Down Syndrome and as a former elementary teacher, I know very well how important it is to feel that you are heard and respected. The school committee meeting was very emotional, as we heard testimony about the trauma and harm some of our students and staff have endured as a result of the budget cuts. I remain committed to finding solutions that allow all of our students to feel safe and respected in our schools and our parents to be heard. Please accept my heartfelt apology. Those tired words do not accurately reflect who I am or what I believe. The CPAC community is near and dear to my heart. I've been supported by your caring since my son started school 35 years ago. I pledge to continue to advocate for CPAC while serving as its liaison to the Northampton School Committee. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yeah. Number Hennessy.
Totally shifting the mood here, so sorry about that.
That's good.
I appreciate what you said, and I appreciate what you said. It's election time, and a lot of people are announcing that they're running. I'm just announcing that I will not be running, as papers will be coming out soon. And if anyone in Ward Five is interested, please reach out to me. My phone number and email are posted, and I'd be really happy to talk to anyone. Right. Period.
Thank you. Does I see Member LaBounty here?
I think you were ahead of me.
Okay. I am also shifting the mood. I've decided not to run for reelection in November, and I'm going to give my reasons. I just turned 73 years old. Birthdays for me are a time for reflection, and this one led me to reprioritization, given how much time is marching on. I've had a couple of bouts with serious illness and am through those just about. I have granddaughters who are growing quickly, too quickly. I look for joy in this broken world. For me, writing books, consulting with new principals, and with districts undergoing the literacy program adoption and attention to reading instruction, as well as being a present wife, mother, grandmother, and friend, are all the things that bring me incredible joy and satisfaction. I'm grateful to the learning and growing I have experienced in working with all of the school committee. You are all dedicated public servants. You care deeply about Northampton students. Our community needs to celebrate you. Thanks to all who supported my candidacy and who've supported me while I served. I will be fully involved until my term is over, term is over, and may we all find hope and peace in the coming days. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I actually wanted to make a little bit of an apology to this body and to the city council. Though I am eternally grateful that we were given the additional mid-year appropriation, I felt that I, I'm not saying this group, didn't do as well as we could because of a number of reasons. But I think it was partly due, and Member Stein brought it up in our meeting, that the way that we were doing the amendments and the friendly amendments or not, I thought I heard the words "up to," which would then have given a superintendent direction to then think about, okay, up to this much, this is how we would prioritize it, not, here's a bucket for you, a bucket for you. It was sort of this, a different way to look at it. Then I feel that then the city council would have been able to see more clearly the value as they were looking at the numbers, and perhaps might have chosen a larger number. I don't know that. I'm, you know, I'm not saying that would have happened, but I think we put them in a bit of an unfortunate situation, and maybe felt a little all or nothing in a way that it didn't have to, and put the superintendent in a position as well. So I just wanted to say I will do better around the amendments and make sure that I understand what's being said, because I do think that we might have missed something there. So I've been thinking about it a lot, so I just want to say it.
There's no one on Zoom, right? Do you have one?
Yeah, I'm also gonna very much shift the conversation, so I don't know if, okay. I am wondering, can I have the ability to share my screen? Dr. Bonner knows what I'm gonna do.
She's sitting next to me.
I don't have the ability to.
She's co-host, so you should be able to.
I, it says only the host can share in this meeting. I don't know if maybe I wasn't made co-host. I don't know.
Oh, I think you're not, actually. I noticed that before.
Okay. Well, then, that's all.
Could you please make Member Seraphie talk as a co-host? There you go.
Okay, let me try it. Yay! Okay. I guess I'll do it this way. So I had a, I have a dog. And my dog started snuggling with my binder, my budget binder, yesterday. And I thought, well, you know, this budget season is gonna be really, really hard. So I think I need to share this with my fellow school committee members. So I texted this picture to the school committee members, and Dr. Bonner, and our madam clerk. And so I just wanted to give the public an idea of how all of us are going to be preparing for the coming budget process. Of course, we take this job very seriously, but as a person who knows how to cry and how to be angry, I also know that humor is needed as well. So in Ward Three, we like to sleep with the budget book to gain its contents through osmosis. In Ward Six, the budget is a coffee table book, to be perused while sipping tea, learning each item by inhaling its sweet aromas. Over in Ward Five, preferred method of edification is to employ multiple helpers to, you know, get to the bottom line. I'm not sure what happens if the helpers' bottom lines don't match, but I guess we will. Sorry.
With their bottoms.
Indeed. In Ward Four, the budget documents are reviewed in great detail on an enormous computer screen, so enormous, it is larger than this particular Ward Four resident. In Ward Seven, budgetary projections are known to drift past the windows, so it is best to keep alert in hopes of spying these rare gems. Ward Two is brand-spanking-new at all of this hullabaloo, but is highly suspect of anyone who would willingly sit in plastic chairs inside a middle school until the wee hours of the morning. Of course, there are those of us who have been doing this so long, we can quote the budget, chapter and verse. But that doesn't keep us from feeling a bit fried at the end of it all. So these are the various dogs of the school committee of Northampton, and.
The calendar fundraiser.
Oh!
Good idea.
Hey, hey, okay. Let's do that. So thank you for, I don't know, for going. So thank you for, I don't know, for going through that with me and indulging me, that's the word. Indeed, with, with seriousness and love.
Thank you for that. Now I know my phone was blowing up. Whatever meeting I was in.
Dog quotas will do it all every time.
Thank you. I also want to add my apology. I, I don't mean to give an excuse. At the last meeting, you probably could tell, I was very sick. And I genuinely was trying, as I said before, to see clarity around a rule that had never been used before. And so it's not an excuse for my poorly articulated way that I, that I stated it. But, you know, I was trying to, I need to administer this rule, and so I was trying to understand it better. And I do apologize for how, how poorly I articulated that, so I'm very sorry. I believe everyone should have the accommodations that they need. Any other? Okay. To recommended actions. And I'm going, yes, Kathy?
I'd like to respectfully pull out Item C. Laura Kretzler reviews those minutes today.
Oh, okay.
We want to double-check some of the numbers in there.
Okay, okay, so I will, I'm going to read the items. So we're just, I'm going to take C out. I'll read the other items and then ask if there are any other removals, because there's no discussion on recommended actions. So February 13th, 2025, meeting minutes for the school committee, the February 13th, 2025, student, why am I blinking on your acronym? Student Advisory, thank you, Committee Meeting Minutes. We're removing C. And July 28th, 2022, meeting minutes, July 23rd, 22, meeting minutes, July 14th, 22, meeting minutes, April 30th, 2020, meeting minutes, February 13th, 2020, Student Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes, and the February 14th, 2019, Student Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes. Are there, so we'll do the minutes first. Any removals? Okay, other than C, which we've already removed. Seeing none.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended actions.
Motion's made by Member Seraphie Cox, seconded by Member Hennessy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections, abstentions? Okay, those minutes, except for C, are approved. C we'll do hopefully at the next meeting. And moving on to the second set of recommended actions. This is a field trip, so this is the Leeds Third Grade to Mashana Tuckett, Tuckett, Iquod Museum in- in Connecticut, thank you. I was trying, I knew, I thought it was Connecticut, but I couldn't find where it said that. Second reading of policy IKF, which is the graduation requirement, and emergency assistance shelter reimbursement funds allocation. That's for $68,598.06. Any removals for those three items? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended actions.
I second it.
Okay, motion's made by Member Gezi, seconded by Member Agna. No discussion, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Okay, those are passed. And that brings us to reports and recommendations. Whoops, sorry, that brings us to business, excuse me. Our first up is NEF grants and Marty Wall and Josh Bedell or Betel. Are they on Zoom, or were they going to be here in person?
I believe they were supposed to be here in person. Is that Josh? On, no.
Okay, well then, we will, did we tell them a certain time?
I think we did. We thought that we would have 90 minutes of public comment.
Okay, so, uh, do you, was there a time? Do you remember what time we told them? I'm reluctant to go to the budget and then make them sit through it, but- Yeah, why don't we move on to C for right now, which is vote on the school year 25, 26 district calendar. And, Dr. Bonner?
Okay, so normally, we bring before you one version of the calendar. And so this evening, we actually have three versions of the calendar. Let me just quickly explain why. Version A is the original drafted calendar that we normally do from year to year. You'll see that our early release days are sporadic. They're not on a set fixed day. And then version B and C, you will notice that there is a, we strategically placed all the early release days on Wednesdays, and we also addressed the week of conferences to be, to be consecutive weeks as opposed to being in one week. And so let's talk about versions B and C and why there are two different ones. So version B actually came out of conversations after negotiations, working with, with the union. And it was really beginning to think about, how can we have some consistency in our schedule and to relieve some of the, the stress of the conferences being all in one week? And so with that, having a conversation with the principals, they were concerned about some of those dates at the beginning of the year were too early to have a conference, so they kind of pushed it back. So that's where the version C calendar came to be. So currently, right now, originally, there was agreement between the principals and names for version A. There was agreement for version B for the union, but then there's consensus for version C from both the union and the principals. So it's up to you. I will make a recommendation. Oh, I see a face, but I can't recognize. The chair has to-
Oh, yeah, would you like to?
We didn't ask you. That's true. I love it.
We noticed that there's a half-day on a day that has AP testing.
Was, which version was that, B or C?
On C.
On C? We thought C was gonna rock. Can you tell me?
C.
Can you tell me what day that is?
May 6.
May 6? I wonder why you know that, because you're just planning your senior year to be just- Okay, let me, any other catches? I thought we caught that one. Is there something else?
Can we share our, like, our student opinions on, like?
Yeah, that's why you're here.
I like having sporadic half-days.
On different days?
Yeah, I don't think they should all be on Wednesdays, because students who have Smith classes on Wednesdays will never get to, like, they'll miss every half-day that's on a Wednesday. I have AP year or third period, and today we had a half-day. And about half my class was, like, not there because they were all on their Smith classes. And, and, and if it's on, like, another day, if it's on, like, if it's on, like, a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule, just like having them sporadically means that students won't have to, like, consistently miss class. And obviously, it's only just like one semester, but if you're, like, especially for seniors who take, who can take up to four, it can be a bit of an issue. I understand that that's something the union really wants, but I personally think that, think that there's, there's predictability and unpredictability sometimes.
Also, I see there's a half-day and then a full no-school day, right, on, on March 11th and 12th, and that is right when the musical starts.
Oh, yeah.
Like, that's exactly a year from now, so there'd, there'd be no school on opening night.
And also, just like, I don't know, like, having half-days, like, half-day and then a no-school day in that part of the year just seems like, it seems like a bad idea, considering that this is exactly the time when things kind of ramp up for AP testing. So, sorry, the AP tests are on my mind.
Looks like there's a test on the 7th, 2 of May, right?
Yeah, so AP tests generally run the first two weeks of May, so you should avoid that, just because that would create some issues. I mean, yeah, I'm trying to think about how that would work. I don't know if that has happened in recent memory, that we've had a half-day on days of AP tests, but it just, I think it would create an environment that wouldn't be suitable for testing, to have different dismissals, because you kind of, you got to get there early if you have an 8:00 AM test. And then if you have a 12:00 PM test, you'll take fourth lunch. So when are those students going to eat lunch? I don't think it would work. But I don't know, you guys, I mean, yeah. It also just seems like, like, what a bummer if you have a 12:00 PM AP test on a day when everyone else gets to go home early. That would be so sad. Okay, is there, is there anything else on the version that you guys saw as an issue? I might want to look at it a little bit more, and you guys can discuss it. And then we can just, like, raise our hands if we see any other issues.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. I'm gonna go to Member Seraphie Cox, and then I'll go over.
Yeah, I mean, thank you for pointing those things out. You would have needed to point them out even if we weren't looking at all three versions, because the March 11th and 12th days are in all three versions, as is, well, it says March, sorry, May 8th is the half-day on the list on the left-hand side, but it's marked as May 7th on the actual calendar.
That needs to be changed. That might be a saving grace.
My guess is that it's on the 7th, not on the 8th, but-
It's on the 6. C.
On C it is, but I'm talking about on, on A. And didn't, Member Hennessy, you said that there was also testing on the 7th? Yeah, so it's already a half-day on the AP test day, is what I'm saying. I mean, even if we were to pass the, like, normal version.
We don't, I mean, looked over at the future, think that this happens already.
It does usually.
There's already a policy, and they work it out.
Member Gezi.
I was just wondering if you have any sense of how many students take Smith classes? I mean-
Can I give you an answer in T-minus seven minutes?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other, yes?
Yeah. I don't know. Yon Kapoor is the first and second, has the half-days in October.
Yeah, we looked at-
We looked at it in negotiations.
Because, because it starts-
It's early.
On October, so I don't-
Yeah.
I'm not, yeah.
It's not gonna be an issue for the early October. Yeah, we looked at that.
Okay, great. Any other answer comments?
I mean, I, I was gonna make a motion. Of course, we'll need to figure out the May 8th or May 7th question, but I was gonna make a motion to approve version C. I'll second. Even if for purely, you know, conversation's sake, but I do think that I would, I'd like to kind of see how, how it goes. It is a, what's the word? It's an experiment to see if, yeah, trial, thank you, pilot project. And, you know, my most recent experience as a, an elementary school parent was that that week long of, of half-days for the conferences was, was a big challenge. And I've, I've also, of course, heard that it's a big challenge for teachers who are teaching those kiddos during that week of half-days. So I think that is especially one of my, one of the driving factors for me in terms of liking version C.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay, I have an answer to the Smith question.
It was less than seven minutes.
Yeah, it was. Oh, my gosh, well, I'm just so speedy then. Well, 15.15% of NHS, of half of the NHS student body that filled out our survey said that they would definitely take a Smith class before they graduate. And then an additional 33.1% of these students said that they would probably take one. Now, I will say, these are the students who did take, fill out the survey, so do with that information what you will. The teachers, I heard them talking and saying that they, that you could just ask them, so maybe you want to do that? I don't know. It also depends on what kind of classes. Like, there's gonna be more students in advanced courses who also have Smith classes, because, like, that kind of lines up. So, like, my AP year or class is gonna be more affected by that than, like, obviously, there's gonna be no students in the freshman, but then they're also not taking any AP tests. I don't know. Yeah, so you can ask them if you want. That's my, that's my input. And I don't know how much of, 33 plus 15%, you can do the math. I can't, I don't want to for how much percentage that is, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you for figuring that out. Okay, any further discussion? So the motion is to, to vote, accept version C. All those in favor, please say aye.
Need a second?
There was a-
There was a second.
Member Lebante, yeah. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any objections, abstentions? Okay. This is unanimously. And, okay, what do we, what do we think? Do we move down to D? Did Marty say?
I haven't heard from them.
Okay. Dr. Bonner, should we move to D, or how would you like to proceed, since NEF isn't here yet?
We could do the-
Or move on to some other section?
Yeah, keep going, and then we'll go back, so that they won't be caught.
Okay, does Bobby have a report, or is it the budget?
Bobby does have a report, but you have the D, mid-year appropriation.
Oh, yeah, I was, I didn't know if that was gonna be a longer conversation, or?
Oh.
I don't either. Okay, we'll move on to D, and then NEF will just have to wait. So the City Council approved a financial order of a one-time amount of $294,883.02 with a recommendation to the mayor to roll in $50,000 of that, which will come somewhere around $200,000 next year. But they approved that amount for a mid-year appropriation of the school committee. So it's been brought back here for, to make sure that the school committee knows and if there's any direction or anything that's needed around that. Member Stein?
Yeah, I just, I want to talk a little bit about this. We got to discuss this on just the other day, Monday, Budget and Property Subcommittee Meeting. And I want to share some of what I shared there and also, you know, give some additional concerns. I was very frustrated to see a appropriation request less than the amount we asked for. And despite hearing at the meeting in which we took this vote during the deliberation on this item, that there was an existing list of priority positions that only needed to be confirmed. And then the impression I think many of us have was that an amount up to $600,000 funding those positions would be forthcoming. It was simply a matter of courtesy of confirming with the principals before it was submitted to us. And then we didn't see it. And what we ultimately saw was a per pupil, per building dispersment and some process soliciting lists to accord with those figures. And that's concerning to me, because it changes the dynamic of the selection process and sort of displaces the responsibility onto each school with a smaller amount of money rather than focusing on student needs. I didn't really see needs at the center of this. And the reason why I brought this motion forward and asked for it to be an agenda item, and the reason I believe a supermajority of us voted for it was because we've been hearing for months and months about the suffering of our students and our staff. So to ultimately get to a point where- So, to ultimately get to a point where we finally get a appropriation request passed and what's presented by the executive that reports to us is a less-than-enthusiastic, uh, presentation of our request for less than half the money was extremely disheartening. Um, and I think in some ways, we can worry about the process and what we said and what we didn't say, but I do think it raises really serious questions for us about, um, how our direction's being followed. And I hope we can find a way to talk about that. Um, the other thing I'm very concerned about is that I, you know, we had a curriculum subcommittee meeting just before the city council meeting votes, and it was laid out for us extremely clearly. We'll probably hear more about this tonight in the report from the subcommittee, what our reading challenges are and what the approach is. And there were significant needs that I do not see reflected remotely adequately, especially for secondary education, in this list that was provided. And I don't understand that disconnect. If the director of curriculum, member of the AL team, is gonna tell us we have all these problems and then we're not gonna ask for positions to fill them with that three-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar difference, what is happening here? Um, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I really feel like we're doing a disservice to our eighth-grade class, or seventh-grade class, our sixth-grade class, our high schoolers, who are having challenges with literacy. And we had an opportunity to make a difference for the end of this year. And for reasons that haven't been made clear, our, uh, executive decided not to. But I, I find this all really frustrating. I would like us to actually decide line items of what we're gonna do with this money, but we simply don't have time. The year is moving forward. Um, but I am extremely disappointed with the outcome of this and for some of the requests, given the needs that have been continually reported to us. I mean, we got a list from Bridge Street School of additional needs, none of which found their way into the request. So the question becomes, why didn't they? Did the principal not get them? Did she not believe in them? Was she instructed not? I, like, I don't know. We don't know. Um, I put in a records request for communications regarding this, which I'll make available to all of you, but I hope we can have a discussion as a body about how this played out. Thank you.
Member Sophie Cox, your hand is up. Is it up from before?
No, I, I just, I wasn't sure if there needed to be any action, but it, it sounds like, um, it sounds like Member Stein hasn't made a, a motion and it was kind of a, more of a, we should do something about this. We don't have the space to do it right now. Um, and, and I do wanna, obviously, you know, have a very important conversation about next year's budget. Um, so I just, it was mostly a kind of, my hand was up to check in about process. But it seems like, though we're, perhaps, some of us are frustrated, some of us are, what have you, that that's, there's not an action to take at this time.
Yeah.
Well, the action right now should be that you accept the mid-year appropriation from City Council. That's the action that should be taken tonight.
Okay, yeah, there wasn't a, like, a suggested motion on the agenda, so that's part of what I wasn't sure about. Yeah, of course, I mean, it just happened.
So, uh, Chair, we need a motion to accept the mid-year appropriations and then we can release those awaiting postings tomorrow morning.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion to accept the mid-year appropriation of two-hundred-ninety-four thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and two cents.
Motion's made and...
I'll second.
Seconded by Member LaBounty. Okay. Discussion, anyone other, who hasn't spoken yet? Okay, Member Stein?
Uh, just procedurally, yeah, it's, it's a question for me too because last spring and summer, we voted on sort of every line item addition. And I don't, I mean, I don't know what the actual procedural rule is, but, um, if we're following that, it would seem like we might wanna amend the motion to say, um, in accordance with the recommendations of the superintendent. You know, to be, we accept them and we'll spend them, you know, in accordance. Um, so I would make, now we're into the non-friendly amendment territory, okay. Um, I'd make a motion to amend the original motion to include, um, that the expenditures of the funds will be for the recommended positions presented by the superintendent.
I would second that amendment.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Yeah?
Can you use your mic?
It's hiding in the snacks. I just wanted to ask a question. I, it might be for Member Stein, I'm not sure. Um, so, this is just, um, it's still a, um, motion to accept, but with more detail, so that we can see all the items that are in there, is that...
Yeah, and pursuant, pursuant to the, the memo that, uh, Dr. Bonner gave to the city council with the particular...
Okay.
Um, line items.
Okay.
Okay, any, Member Miller?
Okay. My recollection is that at the time, we voted to, um, accept and forward to the city council the six-hundred thousand. What I remember is that we had said at that point just the amount and that, in fact, what I thought was that Dr. Bonner had said that she needed to speak with the principals, um, about what each principal thought they needed for their school. And that they would come up with the list of priorities for that amount. So I don't remember all, maybe I'm wrong, that we had itemized how that would be spent. Um, I thought that was gonna be up to the AL team, to the principals.
Right, and, and so the, the amendment is to accept the money and to accept it in line with the recommendations made by the superintendent.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment? Um, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Objections? Abstentions? Okay, any further discussion on the motion as amended? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Objection? Okay.
Like this voice vote.
Yeah.
No, it's hot faster. Okay. So, um, should we move on to reports and recommendations?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so, uh, should we move to Bobby? Bobby. Hi, Bobby. You're muted. Oh, can she not unmute? There you go.
Thank you. Yep, got it. Um, I don't really have anything to add, other than the budget presentation, than what is available to you in the packet. Um, but as usual, please feel free to contact me with any questions, um, either by email or phone call.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Bobby? Nope? Okay. Um, then let's move on to rules and policy, subcommittee update, and Member Giezi.
At our last meeting, uh, we met with Kat Allen, Sue Sullivan, and Emily Bodie from Reconnect Western Mass because they've been gathering a lot of data about cellphone policies. Um, we talked about different types of cellphone policies, which also include AirPods, iWatches. Um, most people use the bell-to-bell policy from the beginning of the day to the end of the day. Um, good things about that are that the teachers are not the enforcers. There's data showing improved social skills. Um, one of the negatives is the cost of, like, the yonder pouches, the locking pouches. But there are also lots of other workarounds. Uh, there's a cheaper, half-price yonder pouch that's now come out. So it's fifteen dollars per person. This would mostly be at the high school, other than thirty dollars per person. There are also, you know...
Can't leave the room.
There are, um, so we're at the beginning stages. Um, there are, we have looked at very, we're looking at different policies at schools, Pioneer Valley, Greenfield, Holyoke, and Hampshire Regional. Some have policies where seniors are allowed to leave their phones in the car. Saying, I knew you. Um, and so there is going to be, um, a talk, should I...
April 7th.
Uh, on April 7th, in the high school auditorium at 7:00 PM, by Dr. Allison Baker, who is an adolescent psychologist and has research and data and information about all of that. So, um, elementary would still be handled at the classroom level, you know, where it's put in the backpacks and stuff. That's, it's not such a problem as it is at the upper levels. So those, that's where we are, we're, we're looking at it. Hold hands.
It's gonna be okay.
Sorry about that.
One more year, just one more semester.
Do you have anything else to report on?
That was it. We spent the whole time talking about that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, do you have a question?
I, I just, I, I wondered if any of our student representatives, since they didn't have a chance to attend your meeting, uh, might have...
Questions.
Questions or thoughts about this? Or, uh, I assume, it sounds like you haven't drafted a policy yet.
We haven't drafted a policy. We are in the process. They gave us the names of various principals who are willing to talk about how it went. And of course, the next step would be to get the building principals involved, you know, and see if this is something that they're interested in.
I have a question. Um, would this be going to effect for, uh, school year 2025 through 2026?
It wouldn't be this school year.
No, like...
Next school year, potentially.
Next school year, potentially.
Potentially.
It takes a lot to write a policy and, you know, there's...
And to implement.
Okay, just gotta pray on slow-moving American democracy for this month.
I just, I wonder if you could maybe say a little bit about why you have such a strong reaction? Because as a parent, I'm like, yeah. Please, let's do this. Cuz my, my, my kid's brain is not on whatever she's doing right in front of her if her phone is...
Nearby.
Within a ten-foot radius.
Yeah. So, you know, I understand that a lot of adults think this. Um, I really do. And I, on the first day of AP Physics 1, Mr. Heaney gave us some data for it. And, um, I, I really, I really do understand. But I also do think, I do think it is worth saying that, um, you know, it's not as big an issue as I feel like people make it seem. Like, I, I don't know. I haven't seen anyone on their phones in my classes this year. I know the teachers are gonna start laughing, they're gonna be like, oh, that, this is such a problem. But, um, I kinda feel like, you know, there used to be a lot of behavioral issues when we were in the younger grades, when you didn't have your phones. And then once they got their phones, it was like a little toy that they could be on when they're... And then they suddenly weren't talking and like disrupting class, which is how I feel. Um, but I know that the, that, that, the teachers feel differently. And, you know, I'm not gonna say that, like, my opinion is super biased, but obviously it is. So, um, also, I just don't really want that for my senior year. You know, ta, I'm like planning my schedule and I'm not hyped about the classes I'm taking. I don't really wanna be doing anything I'm doing. And I'm not excited and I kinda feel like I have no point in being here anymore. And I feel like you're just gonna make going to school like, like, it feel more like a prison. And it just feels like a, a, like a personal, it's like it's personal property, a personal right. It feels like a violation of our, um, of us as Americans, to me. You know, I did get a five on AP Gov, so I will say I do understand American democracy. So I feel like, I just feel like you're taking away our personal, our personal rights. And, you know, when teachers ask us to put the phones in the caddy, it's like, that's like a different thing. And I feel like if, if, if that's something that's important to the teacher, then I would feel good respecting that. But I feel, I feel as if the yonder, I took, I took the SAT this past weekend in, um, West Springfield and I saw the thing about the young, yonder packets. And it was like this passive-aggressive statement being like, keeping our school a fun learning environment or something. And I was just like, oh, eh, is it though? So I don't know. I just feel like, I just feel like nobody, no, like, like, I feel like this is gonna create such a resistance because, I don't know. I think the phone caddy's good enough, personally. Sorry, that was a rant.
Thank you for that. Member Stein?
It sounds like Zara wants a working group to investigate it next year.
Working, what does that mean?
It's buying you the time you want, yeah.
What?
A working group?
To buy you time.
Oh, yes, yeah. Yes, yes. That's, I really like that idea. I'd be happy to be on that committee. If you, you can add, you can add my, my name to the list on that one.
All right, you're gonna chair it. Any further discussion on this? No, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, brief budget and property update.
We had a, I think, a pretty good meeting on Monday. We had a big agenda. Um, the Budget and Property Subcommittee, um, decided as a group, and I'm grateful that my colleagues, um, agreed to go down this route to have three sequential meetings in March. Little peer pressure. Um, so we had a, a Budget and Property Subcommittee meeting, um, this past Monday. We'll have one this upcoming Monday on the 17th, and we'll have one on Monday, the 24th. Um, and we've extended them to two hours for each of those three meetings. Uh, we figured with the budget season, uh, it would be time well-spent for the committee and allow us to pick up on strands from our larger meetings and address some of the other things we maybe haven't as a body. So this past Monday, we talked about, um, this is very in the weeds, but also very interesting. We talked about all of the other funding category stuff that we vote for in the line item budget that is outside of the annual local appropriation budget and really got a sense of what's in there. And we looked at about twenty-two different grants that make up that and five that are pending. So I learned a lot. It was pretty illuminating. Um, on many different areas, we could see some of the federal money that flows in, how it flows in. We got a sense of some of the state money that flows in that's outside of Chapter 70. And we got to understand how that's applied to that line item budget only for personnel. So the, one of the big takeaways for me was learning that the budget's actually larger than that line item budget that we vote on. I don't know what the actual number is, but it's even bigger than that bigger budget that we don't really talk about. So it really brought a lot of things home for me and I think, um, some of the committee members. We've got a recording. I don't know if I shared it with you already, uh, but if you're interested in checking that out, I'd recommend it. It's, um, taught me a lot. Um, we had, as I mentioned, we had a conversation about the mid-year appropriation. Um, we also had, I'm trying to remember what else we did. We did other things.
Transportation.
Oh, transportation, yes, thank you. Yeah, we talked about transportation. There's going, the contract is gonna come up for renewal in about a year. We had done a two-year contract to buy us some time to further investigate electric buses and electrification and our options. And Bobby helpfully raised this again to say, hey, it's gonna come up in a year. If you really wanna look at this again, we need to start doing that. So we're gonna start looking at that after the budget season and see what we can determine are our options in the short and long term. I thought that was super helpful.
Sixty-eight thousand, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so on the, um, on the consent agenda, there's an item for sixty-eight thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and six cents for the emergency assistance shelter reimbursement, uh, funds allocation. And we had talked about this, uh, two meetings ago and then revisited it again last week to get a sense of what sort of outreach was done to the families to see what would be helpful and what the staff... helpful and what the staff in the schools thought would be helpful. And so we got a new recommendation of how it would look, how it would be broken down across in-school supports, outside-of-school supports, summer camp, transportation. And we voted to bring it back here to the consent agenda for you all to approve. That was also a good conversation. And next, next week, next Monday, it's coming up fast, the agenda was just posted today, thanks to Cassie. We are going to be talking about the FY '26 budget presentations that we're getting tonight in more depth. We're also gonna be talking to Director Holloway about the memo he sent us in November. This was the memo for the additional special education stabilization fund request, but it also contained a number of ideas regarding restructuring, which I imagine we're gonna see as part of these budget presentations. We're gonna talk about that. We're also gonna talk about the, the actual Special Education Stabilization Fund so that the members and we all have a clear understanding of it, its use and how it's functioning and its, its ceiling and its, its limit for withdrawals per year. And there's one other item that I'm forgetting, but please tune in. On the third meeting of March, we're gonna have Counselor Maori, the Chair of the Finance Committee, is gonna join us for a conversation about the budget. I'm looking forward to that, and we'll be, we'll have some other items as well. So that's, that's what we've been up to.
Member Agna, curriculum and instruction.
Yeah. Thanks to Cassie also for sharing the video from the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee meeting that we held. And I, I think that we just need to emphasize that there, there are really good things happening in these Subcommittee meetings. And if you're interested, watch it because they really do give us lots of information. So in that meeting, we had invited Rachel Nicholas, who is the literacy coach for the district, and also Director Kate Messmer, who is the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And the presentation was powerful, I would say. The PowerPoint is part of the video, I believe. And Rachel gave us a mini lecture on what the science of reading is and what it isn't. And it's really good. I'm working with the district in Winchester right now about the, trying to move towards a more research-based approach to reading instruction. And so I've been getting information about that also. And I think it would really be a very great thing for families to hear. I'm hopeful that that can happen sometime. And then we also went into what is needed in order to support reading instruction. Rachel Nicholas suggested that the elementary schools, we, we have a good approach to that because we've also had a new program and there is training that's going on with it. She was very honest, and so was Director Messmer, about the issues that are at JFK and at the high school. And they're very significant. They are very significant. I think part of the reasons why is the pandemic. And of course, we can't say any excuses except for that is real, what happened in the, for those students who are now in middle school and high school. And it's not something that the middle school and high school expect to have to teach, reading. So they have a pretty creative way of looking at this. They have two committees, or working groups, I guess, from the strategic plan. One is for the elementary curriculum and one is for the secondary, so with the middle and high school. And they're working very diligently on how to, especially at the secondary level, how to have at least the middle school teachers become reading teachers. It's a really great, creative way of addressing the issues that we have. And it is something that I don't know that the middle school teachers have ever thought that they would be, but I think they know that because of who the students are that come to them. And they know that there are great deficits and they need to do that. And they're also looking at the high school for that. There was a big plea for interventionists at the middle and high school to support the teachers in this task that they have in front of them. It can't, it won't go away, this task. They can't continue without having a full court press, as it were, on how to, how, help students learn to read. So that is something that we were really, it was sobering and it was important. And I'm looking at my colleagues here on the committee, if there are other things that you would like to say about that meeting. I just really want to shout out to Rachel Nicholas and Kate Messmer for coming, giving their time and their expertise. And they need to have a roadshow, as it were, because I think families would appreciate it and, you know, the rest of the school committee, too.
I would just add, first of all, it was very, very helpful and illuminating. I thought, something I took away from it, though, was that it felt like it's essential that the younger grades, that early on, that we emphasize literacy at the youngest grades because that is where it gets solidified. And that when we get to middle and high school, there's a way to integrate learning about reading into the curriculum. But we've got to have the interventionists at the early grades. You absolutely have to solidify their learning how to read early on. And that's even preschool. I'm not saying you should spend preschool learning to read, but that's not what I'm saying. But I think just that early grades really have to have the interventionists.
Do you have anything else, Member Hennessy, that you'd like to share?
Always do.
Of course. Go for it.
I would add a few exclamation points. I agree with both of what you said. A great quote from that meeting was, we can't intervene our way out of this.
Yeah.
And so just how important reading intervention is. And we really have got to, you know, focus on that. And then the last one is that we're gonna save money by spending money now on this. So they were great. I encourage everyone in the public and in this body to watch it.
And I would just add to that quote, the first quote about you can't, interventionists, you're out of. It's because they're gonna have to have the teachers.
Support. No, no, that's.
To do the teaching of reading while they're doing the, the content.
Are you raising your hand, Members?
Yeah, just a question for, for Member Agna in the Subcommittee. Yeah, I, I found the presentation really helpful and fantastic in many ways. And if I was following it correctly, this is sort of the, following up on this, these last two comments. It seems to me what they were impressing upon us, especially in the secondary level, as you said, is that teachers are not trained to teach students how to read, so we cannot deal with it in a Tier 1 setting, and we don't actually have Tier 2 services. I think that was, yeah, at the high school in particular. And we have very limited Tier 2 services at the junior high based on the number of students. And even when we look, we'll see tonight in some of the budget presentations, just the percentage at JFK on IEPs. That's, that I think is what we've been hearing a lot from the community and the data that they provided us, I think, also substantiated that. And I hope we can talk about how to meaningfully address that in this, in this budget cycle because I know some of you probably pay attention to the, more of the national news, but not just here, students graduating without being able to read, right? Suing districts, et cetera. I'm not worried about lawsuits. I just think it demonstrates the kind of crisis we're in. We're not alone. But we should do our best to serve these students and not allow them to graduate being illiterate. I just, that, that to me feels like a basic commitment we should make.
I'd also like to add that there are a couple of members of the public who asked questions about, what about now? And I think that was a really fair question. I mean, I remember at some convocation when the superintendent, not Dr. Bonner, but another one, said, remember, these are the children right now who your, the parents are giving to you, the caregivers are giving to you. And it really, it was such an, made it such an impact. And it also made me think, when those members of the public talked about the fact that it's now, and I think that they were, you know, it's hard to answer that one. It really is hard as, as educators now because they are looking at how they're going to intervene and how they're going to support reading instruction at the middle school. But it's gonna depend on the budget. It's gonna depend on teachers being able to be trained. That's a huge piece in the training of middle and high school teachers to become reading instructors. It was, it was gobsmacking, as they say. It's really powerful. And I just, I really appreciate our educators, our administrators, who are really able to identify that and say, we're really trying, we're really going to do this, and not shirk it at all. So it was, it was very powerful.
Okay, thank you. NEF still isn't here. I'm gonna announce the future business and meeting dates and try and buy them a little bit more time.
He's on his way, he said.
If, if the committee wants me to, I would be happy to routinely send you recordings of the Subcommittee meetings.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Just the next day type thing. If there's, if there's interest, I don't want to spam you.
That's a great idea.
You'll be wholehearted ham.
Thank you for that offer, Cassie.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, budget and property, as has been said, March 17th, 5 to 7 PM, that's on Zoom. Rules and Policy, March 19th, 5 to 6 on Zoom. Negotiating Subcommittee, March 20th, 4:30 to 7:30, that's at JFK, here at JFK. Budget and Property, March 24th, 5 to 7 on Zoom. Special School Committee meeting, March 27th, 5:30 to 7:30 on Zoom. Another Special School Committee meeting, if needed, that's 5:30 to 7:30 on Zoom on April 2nd, if you didn't say that already. Negotiating Subcommittee, April, April 3rd, 4:30 to 7:30 at JFK. Student Advisory Committee, April 10th, 6 to 6:30, that's hybrid here at JFK and on Zoom. And then the School Committee meeting after that on April 10th, that's starting at 6:30, and that is also hybrid here and on Zoom. So those are the future meeting dates. Anyone have any future business they wanna put on the list?
I was thinking this was gonna be towards the end of it.
I know, but look at the, I mean, we'll be able to go into executive session. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, we've knocked everything else off.
NEF is on its way.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say that I spoke in the, this past week at length with our Senator Joe Comerford regarding state funding as a, as I'm the legislative liaison, and I said, you know, what can I do? She's been including kind of that phrase, if, if you have any ideas or want to help. And so I said, okay. And she had a list. So I knew that this meeting was already chock full, so I wasn't gonna propose that that would be on this particular agenda, but she had a list of ideas and I would be, you know, I was calling her in my capacity as the legislative liaison, not as Aileen Davis. So I, one thing that I wanted to say is that I imagine that I need your approval before anything that I write, that we sign, the North Hampton School Committee, but she says that's very effective. But she had lots of ideas about spreading it around more than just like, not just, but not just the Gazette or, or something like that, but to the Boston Globe, to all these journals and whatever. And also MASC, and that also, she said she would be happy to come here and talk to us more about what's happening, national funding, all kinds of stuff. So I wanted to say, even though it's super true that it's, feels like perhaps pie in the sky, future, not gonna happen for a long time, it's really, it's still, like, we have to, I believe, like, we have to walk and chew gum at the same time. Like, it's that and it's also this. And so whenever it fits in the agenda, to the agenda-setting folks, the variety of things that I'd want to put on there, it seemed important.
Could, would you, could you send us that list?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
I just had a question, and maybe this is not a question for you, Member Davis, but I'm curious if there, I remember that our legislative representatives let us know that our MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Lobby Day is far too late.
Yes, it was like.
So is there any talk in MASC about moving that date? Maybe that's more of, I don't know, was there any?
Me too.
I mean, sure. You, you were the representative this last year, right?
I went last.
And you did too? Okay.
It was, that was one of the things that was talked about, was like.
Yeah.
It was like the ship had sailed.
Yeah. Did they have a reason why they have it so late?
Because they've always done it that way.
Of course.
I think it was.
Clearly, and that's also the reason why they send us, like, like, random tchotchke stuff that, I'm, you know, must cost them thousands of dollars, that is money that they get from us. Okay, I have opinions about this, clearly. But yeah, I mean.
I will.
That would be great.
Yep.
Anyone else have anything to add to the list? Okay. Wow. Justin, yeah.
Sorry, again, my, like, Member Davis, my head is like, that's at the end of the meeting. And even though we're talking about it, I'm realizing.
Moments now.
I, I think we need to talk about what we heard today in public comment about the IEP reality in the district. And I think we should, that is a very serious statement we received with very serious issues, and we need to, we need to have a conversation about it as a body and understand the reality of, of what's happening here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Marty Wall, are you, are you the only one who's coming, or is Josh coming as well?
I'm Josh.
Okay. Well, we're very happy to welcome you to talk about the NEF Endowment Grants.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Sorry I'm late. I guess it was anticipated it'd be later.
We all did.
We're rarely ahead of schedule.
I know, this is great. I, I, I won't keep you too long, but I, I did wanna, you all have it in a packet that we sent. But I do want to make it sort of public besides, so if you bear with me a little. I want to thank you for having us. My name is Marty Wall. I live in North Hampton. I am the Vice President of North Hampton Education Foundation and Co-Chair of the Distribution Committee. And, and we're very excited to inform the school committee that, and the community, that the increased and restructured funding of the NEF Endowment is finally here. This was a conversation that actually started in 2015. So, so made possible by the completion of our second $1 million campaign at the end of 2019. And delayed by the disruption of the pandemic in many ways, the promise of perpetual funding to enhance and enrich North Hampton Public Schools and the students from preschool through high school is here. After years of amazing generosity from the greater North Hampton community and the steadfast, conscientious collaboration of innumerable stakeholders, we are able to provide much greater funding than ever before. Since its founding in 1991, the North Hampton Education Foundation has awarded approximately $2 million to directly benefit the students and educators of the North Hampton District Public Schools and Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School. Since the first grant awarded in 2007, the Endowment has awarded almost $1 million to enhance and enrich the district public school experience in North Hampton. This year, under its guidelines, the North Hampton Education Foundation is awarding North Hampton High School up to $100,000 over the next three years and for every three years thereafter to fund creative and meaningful projects and programs. Through the North Hampton High School School Council, expertly chaired by Principal Ben Tagliari, and most importantly, with the collective will of innumerable stakeholders, the school and community will utilize these funds to help actualize their collective vision of the high school experience. This homegrown local funding source, invested with the Community Foundation of Western Massachusetts, fully protects its principal and uses only the dividend and interest growth generated. These funds are generated by the foundation. These funds are generated by the Foundation Endowment Fund, and under its umbrella, the named funds, which are the Bank of ESB Fund, the Eli Daniel Nemitz Todd Memorial Fund, the Florence Bank Fund for Public Education, the Marie Hershkowitz Memorial Fund, the Northampton Area Pediatrics Fund, and the Principal Gwen Agner Fund for Northampton Public Education. Today, we're happy to announce and gift the first of Northampton Schools' fully funded projects for this future. The Northampton High School Library Collaborative, the Collaboration Corner, which is fully funded at $36,000. The high school library is much more than a place to house books. It's a social learning hub that provides spaces for student safety, independent learning, connection, collaboration, and more. Different zones are needed so students and teachers can self-select where to work in the library, especially in this cavernous space that was once a gymnasium. The Collaboration Corner would allow neurodivergent and neurotypical students to choose ergonomic and active seating, or to easily move acoustic privacy screens, chairs, and tables to satisfy physical and emotional safety needs. This proposal is specifically to create a zone for social and collaborative learning, which is one of the most common purposes for which classes use the library. When funded and well implemented, this project will provide a model that can be replicated to provide a more collaborative and flexible learning environment in Northampton classrooms. The high school will be redesigning the Collaboration Corner in order to open up the library physically and functionally by prioritizing a flexible, technology-enhanced learning space and a small group collaboration room. This imagined corner, this reimagined corner, will serve as a 21st century hub of inquiry, teamwork, and creation, bringing students and faculty together to explore rigorous research questions and showcase new knowledge. The second project that's funded fully at $8,300 is the Northampton High School Blue Devils Cafe. With staff and educator support, students running the school coffee cart make labels, bag baked goods, do all kinds of things, greet customers, complete deliveries, and manage the cash box. The coffee cart has provided students with a realistic life skills environment to build their vocational skills, social skills, and executive functional skills, as well as leadership and money management. Both students and staff have expressed the positive impact this cart has had on the school community. Therefore, the Blue Devil Cafe project will expand the work of bringing our high-risk, high-need students with the community, as well as supporting further student development of independent living skills and job readiness skills. Expanding the project will allow more students across levels to participate and learn from each other and to develop necessary life skills before graduation. This cafe project will expand the cafe cart into a standalone cafe within Northampton High School that will offer new opportunities to work on food safety, prep, budgeting, learning how to take orders, maintaining clean work environments, and such. These new programmatic pieces will help lead to future employment for students by providing a bridge between academic learning and the workforce, allowing students to gain hirable skills while also participating in vital education. Eventually, expansion can also include adding tables which can provide new opportunities for staff members and various student populations to interact and create connections beyond the classroom, expanding the communities of our most vulnerable students. This project, this process is now going on at the JFK Middle School, and it's presently in this process constructing their plan with the awarded funding for their first three years, starting in September. And these additional funds are available right now with the app, there are additional funds, I'm sorry, available right now with application deadline being March 15th. So there are funds available for the elementary school. This money that's going to be available for JFK, they're in the process of deciding how to use it over the next three years. But there is a deadline, March 15th, so if there's any projects in the elementary schools, now's the time to send it in, including preschool, elementary and preschool. And that's been conventionally done over the years. When fully in place during school year '26, '27, every three years, every grade level will then follow this new and directly responsive method. None of this could happen without the amazing generosity and commitment of the Northampton community. It has shown how it champions public education to the benefit of us all. Thank you. We and our city students are eternally grateful for your continuing to support these efforts. We take donations at any time. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The high school will be able to access these funds probably within two weeks on your accepting the gift of $44,300. Thank you.
Thank you so...
Thank you very much.
Marty, and thank you for that lovely presentation as well. Appreciate it. Does anyone, before you sit down, you have sat down, does anyone have any questions or comments for Dr. Wall? Member Stein?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation and for all the generosity and the organization to steward this, to give perpetual generosity. It's no small task and much appreciated. We had had a presentation a while ago about sort of this coming, so it's super exciting to see it already here. And I guess everyone else may not know this, but I may know this and I don't, but I'm wondering, you know, I'm more familiar with the smaller grants. Maybe you could tell us about how schools should, like, provide you with ideas for these larger grant ideas, this newer program?
So this doesn't substitute for anything. It's an add-on. The small grants continue, the book fund continues, all of that stays the same. In fact, the small grant funding will be increased. There's going to be higher levels of funding for that. We felt as though the best funnel for ideas was through the school council, because that's the one that's mandated by the state and it's going to be here. But it's very important, and through our distribution committee, it needs to show that stakeholders are actually being heard through that process. So we don't want it to be a half a dozen folks thinking, oh, that's a great idea. And the high school was a great model, and the middle school really sees that now also. So we're confident that there'll be lots of voices, and as this continues, because no one's spending the money all in one day, when people see that they can say, hey, I have this idea, let's talk about it. So then it becomes part of that mix within each of the council process. The elementary schools are going to be challenging. There'll be a lot more money available because there's four buildings, but they're going to have to collaborate and find out which things that they want to do together, and which things will they say, well, you do this, you do that. So we're going to start that soon, probably by the end of this school year. And that money will be available to them in 2026 to '27. But there, right now, this March 15th deadline is for their, specifically just for elementaries and preschools, to fund their ideas. It's a competitive method, but we want to give the money out, so, March 15th, which is...
Two days.
Saturday night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Member Sheriff Cox for you?
Oh, no, basically the same question.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that, you know, the small grants are totally separate, and that both Superintendent Bonner and I are on the committee that selects which of those small grant applications come realities. So that's separate.
Goes through the distribution committee for the small grants and then goes to the board for final approval. Right. So, and that's been going on for a really long time and been very successful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our sincere gratitude.
Thank you for your patience.
Is there, is there a motion to accept or approve?
To make a motion to accept the gift from the Northampton Education Foundation?
Second. Ann can do it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections, objections? I could do a voice vote for that, right?
Yeah.
Is there anything I can't? Okay.
There might be something, it's, I think it's like...
Okay.
Probably moving to close debate, something like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to stay.
All right, that leaves one item on our, well, for this part of the agenda, then we have executive session.
Maybe a quick break?
Okay. Five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess.
Great.
Get excited about...
Hanging in there.
Hanging in there.
And nurturing kindness, empathy, inclusive inclusivity. Now, as I go through this, there's always what happens is you find things. So take out your pen and there and duly note any time that there is something highlighted in yellow. So we'll make those corrections as we go. And once I finish presenting this evening and tomorrow, we will also make those updates for our public. So develop so my one of my goals this year was to develop an NPS budget and budget process that meets the needs of our students and district goals. So as put as as promised, there are three views of the budget. And so the strong budget we found is is about 13.24% increase over the base. And so it equates to 46,610,000 $10,090. The level service budget, which means it's really kind of rolling over all of our current services that we now have with the increase of the COLAs and STEPs. And so that came out to be 7.7%, which equates to 44,330,022. And then the targeted budget, which is in alignment with the city's fiscal stabilization fund, targeting, did I say that right? Targeting 4%, which equates to 42,686,983.81. So that's the first highlight, and you will see that there is a number that was off. So just a reminder of how this budget planning for this course of this year and how it aligns within our strategic plan objectives. And we have five objectives, one being to achieve net zero carbon emissions in MPS facilities, including technology upgrades and classroom and bathroom upgrades to promote users' well-being, inclusion, and MPS priority instructional approaches and strategies. The second being develop MPS budget and budget process that meets the needs of our students and district goals. The third, optimize the district's nutrition program to meet users' needs and align with net zero carbon emissions. The fourth, improve ELA and math outcomes for English learners, students with disabilities, low-income students, and students identified as Hispanic or Latino. The fifth being strengthen the sense of connection and belonging experienced by students, staff, and caregivers. So just to update you in terms of where we are with our strategic plan and how it how it unfolds within the the budget process. So in terms of objective three, optimize the district's nutrition program to meet users' needs and align with net zero carbon emissions. There's been a work group that is facilitated by Missel Hannah, who is our nutrition director, and she's been working with the group since, I believe, it was December. And so the purpose of this group is to identify range of dietary needs, review vendors and local providers for cost efficiency and quality, develop menus for diverse diets, promotion and marketing, review of kitchen equipment, appliances to meet net zero carbon emissions, and develop sustainable composting procedures. So this group is being this thus far, this group has been reviewing those guidelines for school meals and menus, compiling a caregiver survey, and piloting a composting program at Ryan Road. They also have been increasing their marketing through the Fresh Hampton program and currently assessing all six schools for their kitchen equipment. Unfortunately, we just learned on Tuesday that this our program will be affected by the USDA cuts, that $1 billion cancellation to USDA and local food purchasing. It will affect us by $20,000. Additionally, Director Kate Messmer is facilitating multiple work groups focusing on the district's pre-K through 12 reading plan. We welcome or we ask parents to definitely review the last previous curriculum subcommittee meeting, which really had a well-spoken presentation on our focus and how we are really trying to look at addressing every grade band in terms of their needs. We were well on our way in terms of the elementary with the adoption of the new curricular program that we just instituted on last year, but not we're not moving as fast for our middle school and our high school. We know that when you get to those levels, you're dealing with more complex texts. And so how do you embed the foundational skills within the content classes? So we're looking at that, also looking at support models and what we can do. And hopefully, by June, we'll have a draft of our goals to be able to address the needs of our students. Let's see. Additionally, Director Messmer has reestablished a professional development team, which is actually one of our unit, one of our binding contract teams that we should have annually, which hasn't met in, I don't know, quite a few years. But their their focus is to actually develop a three-year plan to align all of the needs to meet like so to improve reading, there's what kind of professional development should we have. Right away, I already know that they're looking at the work Gillingham training, providing that for for staff, responsive classrooms. So there's a lot of things that are happening, but it's with the stakeholders who it's going to most affect. And so Kate is really working with that particular group. And as well as Kate Messmer and Director Matt Holloway, they're working with different grade bands to develop the district's MTSS model. And for those of you who don't know what MTSS, the multi-tiered support system, looking at tier one, tier one is literally our classrooms, whatever happens to day-to-day. Tier two is additional supports. You might have an interventionist pushing in or working with a student one-on-one. There might be tutoring or so on, or there may be actual modified instruction in the classroom. And then tier three are more focused supports where you may again push in as opposed to pulling out, where interventionists may be working with student groups in the classroom. So we are working on that plan as well. The other groups that are working, the out-of-school time childcare work group, they have been meeting since October. They are the ones who are responsible for putting out that survey, gathering information on our the needs of our caregivers in terms of after-school and before-school care, looking at that and giving me some recommendations. So I believe by the end of April, I will have that report and will be sharing with you after I have an opportunity to have a conversation with that particular work group. And so that group is facilitated by Gabrielle Hollander. And so at the end of this month, we've been kind of busy. At the end of this month, two more work routes will be launched, and one will be focusing on the master's facilities plan, which we do not have for our our district in terms of our six buildings, what you know, the age of those buildings, the needs of those buildings, capital improvement and so on. And then the second group and looking at what we need to do in terms of the getting to that net zero carbon carbon emissions. And so this group will be working with, of course, with just talking about our buildings, but so besides myself facilitating, we're going to invite Tony Cusner, who's Cusneers, who is our supervisor of buildings and grounds. Okay. So then the the last group is the consolidation and changing enrollment. And although we call it consolidation, it does not necessarily mean that we're going to consolidate, but it's about looking at our facilities and analyzing the needs and then reflecting on our changing enrollment. Okay. All right. So a few factors that really came into consideration as we were developing this budget. Again, mentioning Chapter 70 has not increased at a rate that keeps pace with inflation, circuit breakers not fully funded, uncertainty in federal funding, union contracts in the midst of negotiations, federal funding for pandemic recovery has expired. And I mention this because it expired at the end of September. So there were some dollars that we used during the course of the summer programming and then also the first month of this of September. Increased expenses for out-of-district tuition and transportation costs for regular athletic and special education. Additional factors, student learning loss associated with the pandemic, students' social, emotional, and psychological wellness, and increased numbers of students with special needs. So let's talk a little bit about the enrollment, our current enrollment. So you can see the trends. So right now, I will say that we are pretty much stationary or stagnant, but you see from 2021 to 2025, there was a change. And so the expectation and the trends across the state is that student enrollment is declining. And so particularly in our region of the state. And so I want you to this, by the way, this is so that we have some consistency with our enrollment numbers, we're using the October 1st data because I found that last year, we were giving you snapshots of whatever that timeframe was and you it was difficult to see the fluidity of the changes. So so this I wanted to point out in terms of our kindergarten enrollment and look at the change. And so this is going to impact our classes in future years. So right now, look at from 2024 to 2025, there is a large, you know, we're starting to see the decline. And so we are watching those numbers, and that's something to have a conversation about. Enrollment by grade. So this is this current year enrollment, and this is the October 1 snapshot. A couple of things that I will mention when you start to look at where we are now as opposed to that October 1. So particularly at the high school. So if you see the high school numbers, we had 875 students in October. And then Jackson Street increased by two students, and they are projecting three sections So somewhere along the way, as we look at our end of February report, we have actually of grade levels three and five for next year. lost 12 students. JFK maintained their 577, 577 students, no change. So and it happened to be mainly at the 12th grade level. And I haven't investigated that, but it was just notable. Okay. All right. For our elementaries, Bridge Street School, so remember a while back, I said that during So projected enrollment, let me just get here. the summer, Bridge Street School, the enrollment increased by about over 30 students. Let me just explain a little bit about this chart, and I know that some people have found It was just like influx of students. some differences in terms of the totals. So the October 1 count, October 24, those are the numbers that are fixed. Well, Bridge Street had 281, so if we look at the numbers now, it's 265. The other numbers are projected, and so those numbers move up. So there was a change in of enrollment for many factors in terms of why families have So you will see that we are expecting, we're moving from 2,498 students to 2,366. left or moved around in the district. Leads, their numbers from October 1 to now is pretty steady. That's what we're expecting. So we're expecting 132 less students for next year. There are an increase by three students. We'll wait and see. We do lose students to the charter schools, to the private schools. I will let you know that when you begin to look through the different profiles, leads More and more of our high school students are selecting Smith-Vogue. currently has three sections of fifth grade. They will not need those three sections next year. And so and that is a trend across, actually, that's a trend across the nation, that students So potential reduction or reassignment of staff there. are are looking for those opportunities and not really looking for additional post-secondary Ryan. schooling after. They need a trade, they need a craft. Okay. Okay, I answered that first question. So question. Wait. That's okay, go ahead.
So this number here is not a projection. This number here is for this year.
Correct.
Okay. It was a it was a very specific question that I had about the numbers. Sorry. I got it.
Okay. Oh, so there are some things too that to consider, and we are watching. There's a few building projects that may affect our enrollment, even though we're looking at it to be kind of stationary or stagnant or less. There's 20 units on Laurel Street, which would potentially affect Bridge Street School. 12 of the 20 units are more than one bedroom, so it could be families. There are going to be 63 units on Bridge Road that would affect Jackson Street, and those are due to be ready by December 2025. So we're definitely watching that larger project there.
Is that the nursing home?
I, yes.
Yep.
63.
Are they all different sizes?
Yes.
Yeah, but there's a lot of family.
Yeah, a lot of family units on that one. And then there's a small Maple Street, there's like a 10-unit building going up in Florence Center, there's eight units. So those are things that we are watching because they will affect our enrollment. You guys can't even take it. Go ahead and ask me questions. It's okay. It's fine. I think we need so it's fine.
Well, I was just, what I was noticing was, first of all, it seems like when they get to middle school, there's been a drop in people attending JFK. And the number for the high school is much larger than the number for JFK. And I do remember from long ago that many people choose to go for middle school to private school.
Yeah.
Or somewhere else. And is that what we're assuming? And also, I was thinking about is, we really need to be recruiting people for preschool and kindergarten, and the numbers are not like there's a decline.
Yes.
In number of kindergartens. That's where we should be pumping in the, you know, promotion.
I agree, and Laura Fragamini would agree as well. So we've that's in the works. That's that is definitely in the works. Okay, a little bit about our demographic groups. So these these you can look at at, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Just enrollment questions, projections. I haven't had a ton of time with this yet to go through it all. But it seems to me that there are different projections for the schools in the school data that's further down. So for JFK, it says they're projecting 620, and I think in the roll-up, it was sub 600.
Five, six.
Yeah. And so the in the the other night at council, you'd say that I think we lost 30 students from Bridge Street, but here we're talking about 16, and it's like everything also depends on what was October and then what is today. I'm hearing now it's net down maybe seven. So my concern is that we may be overestimating decline, and I'm wondering if we've looked at what the projections were last year versus the actuals, not just for October, but for the school year and what the pattern is, because we may be more relatively flat. And the school trend that we have across the state is actually rising. It's rising very slightly, but it's 915. It's up over the prior year. So I don't know, I'm just I'm having a hard time really understanding how we're putting together these projections and why some of them don't seem to match what comes later in the project and why we're getting over a course of weeks, very different numbers about Bridge Street enrollment. I understand everything depends on date, but we have to be able to really explain why we think we're going to have a decline, what's reasonable based on history, and when we make statements, especially about appropriations and suggest there's a lot less people, so we don't need money, than there actually are, that's that troubles me. So yeah, I'll look more into it. We can talk more about it, budget and property too, but I just to point out other areas where it seems to not align with other sort of projections within the document.
Okay, so demographics, you could take a look at that in terms of our different cohorts. I'm going to stop here in terms of our students with high needs, English language learners. You could take a look at our numbers, but particularly students with disabilities. So again, this is a snapshot of our October 1 numbers. That number is probably about 27% now.
The disabilities?
Yes. Yes. See, hi.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
These are all not unduplicated numbers, right? So the students with disabilities are only in that category?
Correct. High needs is the umbrella that takes all the things that are below it together.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. If you all can hold your questions, I really could get through this faster. Okay. Again, red highlight, so a couple of things to change here and take out your pens. So this particular chart shows growth in staffing, and so over the last six years has seen an FTE growth of 32.67 FTEs or a 9% increase in staffing. Enrollment in the same period has decreased by 2.9%. The largest growth in staff has been in Paraeducators, 36% increase. And so areas where you need to change, that last column should have been 2019 to fiscal year 2025, not four. And that bottom enrollment, the change is negative 7.93%.
Not two.
Not two.
Not negative 7.93%.
Yes. All right. Couple of highlights there. All right. So moving on into our financial section, and I'm going to talk a little bit, and then Bobby is going to take over to just briefly say something about the cost centers, just explain to you how to read them and go from there. So North Hampton Public Schools, this shows the level service budget versus available revenues. And there is a highlighted change in that last column. And let me read that number to you. That should say 47,561,339. And so in our level service budget, if you remember, our level service budget is about 7.7% over the base. And Bobby did a comparison in terms of what the estimated budget gap may be, even in the comparison in terms of the the targeted budget. So you have your main areas. It also shows the last year's appropriation. It shows the Smith College donation, Special Education Stabilization Fund, which accounts should account for both appropriations. A school choice, and we're going to talk about that briefly in a minute. And Bobby, you could chime in if I just said something. Need to clarify that. And then it shows our major revenue sources other than just the city's appropriation. We did the same thing, we did have time, thank you, Bobby, to take a look at this if we included the most recent mid-year appropriation that happened last week. And so there is a highlighted change, that last column should be 47,769,339.
That's on?
That so we are on?
The second page?
Yes.
Of the level service budget.
Correct. So I know that unfortunately, that wasn't number page number.
The gap is the same, though.
Yeah. Now, just remember that it we don't know if that's going to be rolled in to the base, so we're being very cautious. Okay, so then we're going to do the same thing for the strong budget. So the next two charts will show that there's two areas to 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 change. In the second to last column, this is current fiscal 2026, bottom total operating budget. It should read 51,484,445. And these updates will be posted. Okay. Let me say that one again, 51,484,445. And in that last column, same row, last column, it should be 47,561,339. And you can see the difference in terms of the the gap. And so Bobby did the same thing for looking at the mid-year appropriation that we just received, and so we need to make those adjustments down in those same lines. Total operating budget, 51,484,445. And again, 47,769,339.
Do you need this? Is that what you need? I don't know, it's mine, but you can look at it.
Something else?
All right. Just a
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I think that was members' guys. There it is. I have mine now.
So a brief reminder of the history of school choice. In the past, school choice tuition that came in during one school year was reserved for the use of the following school year. In fiscal 2019, the school committee began using more school choice than the district was generating, thereby using reserves, one-time money to fund recurring recurring operating budget expenses. In fiscal year 2022, the school committee voted to use not only school choice and reserves from the prior year, but also school choice tuition from the current year, in effect using two years' worth of school choice in one year. Revenues from incoming school choice students have been on the decline since a since a high in fiscal year 2015. So I know you remember this chart from last year, it's been updated, but if you look at that last column, we are in the black. We're trying to make efforts of restoring that fund and not overusing it as and serving as a reserve, building it back up. Who knows what when we may have to tap into it again.
Next week?
Okay. And so we also included this year, the the capital projects, because there was some talk about feeling not as well-informed as you should be about the school buildings. And so this was the this is the capital project summary that was produced. This work starts early fall, and so it and it projects five years out, so you can get a sense of what has been submitted by the various various departments. And so you can see we submitted some additional requests for radios, and then the technology is right below that. So we've got the building, which would be from Tony, then the radios, which was submitted through my my office directly, and then the technology component. So you have a sense of what's going to be occurring over the next five years. Okay, the comparison of the three views, and then I'm going to tell you a little bit more about what's in that strong budget. And you'll see that there is a correction at the bottom for the city's fiscal target, which should read Okay. And so we also included this year, the capital projects. Because there was some talk about feeling not as well-informed as you should be about the school buildings. And so this was the, this is the capital project summary that was produced. This work starts early fall. And so it, and it projects five years out. So you can get a sense of what has been submitted by the various departments. And so you can see, we submitted some additional requests for radios. And then the technology is right below that. So we've got the building, which would be from Tony. Then the radios, which was submitted through my office directly. And then the technology component. So you have a sense of what's going to be occurring over the next five years. Okay. The comparison of the three views. And then I'm going to tell you a little bit more about what's in that strong budget. And you'll see that there is a correction at the bottom for the city's fiscal target, which should read, remember, we changed this earlier, so we got to change this one. And so, and this is a summary. It doesn't, probably doesn't, doesn't capture all of the different things, but you'll see that in the cost centers. So for the strong budget, the types of requests that came in would be to add additional reading and math interventionists at five, five schools. So that would be, oh, I'll get to that in a second. I won't jump from that. So the addition, yes, the interventionist at five schools. Add general paraeducators for hall monitoring, tiered support, recess and CAF duties, and small group instruction at four schools. Restoration of full-time clerical at two elementary schools. Add special education teachers at three elementary schools. And one adaptive technology specialist. I know that Member Stein spoke about the next budget and property meeting. So I believe that that will be the time that Matt Holloway, our Director of Student Services, will actually break down his presentation in terms of how the special education budget was developed in tandem with the building principles. Okay, so add integration specialist services. Add additional content staff at the high school. As you all remember, the presentation from students a while back, that there really is a need for additional content staff so that students can get first choices. So the same for JFK. Add school psychologists at the high school. Currently, there's one school psychologist who services the entire student body of just under 900 students. Whereas if you look at the ratio for the elementary and JFK, much lower ratio. So to help offset that caseload. Add district-wide multilingual teacher. Increase nursing care coordinator to full-time. Currently, she's part-time. And HVAC summer interns. Additional non-personnel requests to address actual costs, replace grant-funded items into operating budget. And so the outcomes for all of this is to continue to meet the needs of our district improvement goals, address safety and student management, implementation of specialized programming for students with severe disabilities and medical, medically fragile needs. Expand STEM and digital literacy at the elementary. Reduction of special education caseloads. Reduce class size and allows for more student choice. Improve support services staff to student ratio to address increasing needs of multilingual students and to meet growing needs of, and to accurately report current expenditures. The level services budget, which is a 7.7% increase over the base. So at minimum, we maintain one reading and one math interventionist for each elementary and middle school. Able to create special programming for medically fragile and, and, medically fragile and students with severe disabilities with current staffing and the addition of two special education teachers at the elementary level. So let me explain what that is. The, and something that I've, you know, that I've been hearing since being in the district, talking about the wins model and how that change at the elementary level has really, has really never settled well with many of our staff. And so the Director of Student Services has looked at the potential of special programming in some of our buildings to be able to address the needs of, the severe needs or the medical needs or the severe disabilities of our students. And this is not excluding them, but it is more of a intentional programming for students and also the opportunity for time with their regular or general ed peers. And so I'm hoping that the Director will talk a little bit more about that during either the special school committee meeting, as well as at the budget and property. And that would be also in the strong budget as well. So it's not just level services. We can actually do it with the resources we have now with the addition of two more special education teachers. All right. And so what this means in terms of level services, there's no reduction in staffing. If the COLA remains at the same rate, continues to meet the needs of the district improvement plan, restoration of specialized programming for medically fragile and students with severe disabilities, will not reduce class size at middle and high school level. Just note that, that if, because we are not adding the content teachers and so on. So just know that it will pretty much maintain. And right now, it's about 27 to 28 students in the classes at JFK. It varies, of course, at the high school. And then lastly, oh, that last point, impact coverage of non-classroom duties. So a lot of concern about supervising students in outside classroom time, you know, in terms of the cafeteria, breakfast, playground. So hall, hall duty transitions and so on. So having those general educators or general paraeducators to be present to be able to help with those transitions is something that has been requested. So we would not be able to do that with the level services. City's fiscal target at 4%. It would require a reduction of full-time staffing. Elimination of all requested new positions, excluding the special education staffing, though. We would have to do that. Reduction in all non-personal lines excluding utilities and transportation. Savings from staff turnover, retirements is something to consider. We, I believe we have, let me see if I actually wrote that down today. We have nine staff members so far who have put in for retirement. Out of those nine, there's five teachers, one school year clerk, one paraeducator, one custodian, and one principal. Okay. So this definitely may impact class sizes, more so at the upper level as opposed to the elementary. Course offerings at the high school limited and continuation of students not able to receive desired courses. So in the strong budget, that some of the new personnel requests are particularly at Bridge Street. And you're going to see some of these things that were actually in alignment with what was requested in the mid-year appropriation. So for instance, the reading interventionist, which would be a restoration, and a .5 math interventionist restoration. And I say this because it was, this, these were positions that were at Bridge Street before, but they were never in the operating budget. They were paid for through ESER. The addition of a new, a new special education teacher at that, at that school. Jackson's, oops, sorry. Jackson Street, full-time combination of a math and reading interventionist. And then support team paraeducator to be used along with the tiered support coordinator who are there, who is currently there at Jackson Street. Paraeducators, too, to replace our contracted services that we now have. Doc, Director Holloway is in the process of offering some training for RBTs in the district. So we're excited about that. There were a couple of pairs who took, who are actually invested and want to get this special training. And then first grade paraeducator, they want that restored. And then their clerical restored. And so, so some of these requests were made through Jackson Street. There will be no need for an additional classroom teacher because there will only be two grade levels that will need three sections. Lead School wants additional hours for their BCBBA. And this is what was requested in the mid-year appropriation. So, and then two full-time general ed paraeducators, which is a new request, to be basically floaters throughout the building to help with those duties that are not, are not now covered. And then the restoration of a math interventionist at the building. Ryan Road, full-time special ed teacher, general ed paraeducator, and then to restore that clerical position back to full-time. JFK, this is a long list. Let's see if I can get it through quickly. And I'm almost done. So JFK Middle School. So this is, this is a new approach. There are adjustment counselors currently at the middle school, but they want one additional one who is solely working with the special programming that's at the, at the middle school for their ALD and ASD program. They want hall monitors like the high school. And they would like to extend a .5 ELA teacher to a full-time. And then you can see the other content areas, science and social studies. By doing that, that will offset some of the high numbers in the classes. .5 math interventionist, they currently have one full-time. So this will be a restoration of a .5. Restore the librarian, who right now, who we have doing .5 library and .5 tech. So making her whole again. And making the tech integrationist position whole again. And then an additional .5, well, actually, this is a restoration because there was an elimination. So a .5 rural language teacher. And then a full-time reading interventionist. And lastly, the high school, full-time English teacher, who, which would be a restoration. Full-time school psychologist, additional special education teacher, and then a stipend request for guidance clerical to assist with scheduling. Just to remind you that last year, the high school did lose a clerical position. So that small request of a stipend position to help with scheduling would be really helpful. Student Services, you'll see their requests. Same with our multilingual or our English language education program. You'll see the requests there as well. Some of these will be covered partially in a grant. I do want to point that out to you all. It won't be totally operating budget. But I do have kind of a projected total of what this would cost us. Tony Kessniers is doing something different. He wants to have some interns over the summer for HVAC. So that's in there. And then integration specialist. Currently, we have two integration specialists that cover the four elementary buildings. So the request is to have two more additional so that each, each building would have their own integration specialist. And then lastly, and I won't read through this, is that there were some non-personnel requests also that was amounting to about $149,582. You will see in there are some of the things that we've been talking about throughout the year in terms of the organic fields and some other requests of funding to really help with professional development, their software lines, and so on. Okay. So here's another thing that if, this is also electronic. So if you wanted to just go directly into the links for the cost centers, it is there. And so Bobby, if you're still with us, if you want to talk about the cost centers, and then we'll open it up to see if there's any more questions for them. I think I lulled them to sleep. And it wasn't intentional.
I don't think you lulled them to sleep. Yeah, so as we go through the next section, what you'll see is that in the front, you'll see the budget that represents everybody, everything.
I'm getting there. Let me get there.
Well, I think you have to go back, actually, because we're under the...
Are you under the profiles?
No, I was just going to show the beginning where it had all.
Okay. The comparison?
I'm going to look at my tab here. Right under tab two.
Okay.
And my, yep, keep going.
Oh, page 20. There was actually a page there.
Yep.
That one?
Yep, next page. Nope, go one more. Yep, no.
No, Bobby, because I'm going back into the informational piece. So...
What does it say at the top, Bobby?
It says, there's a page in there that says cost center, and then they have the link.
Oh.
In the beginning.
Oh, yeah. 33. Okay. I went fast. That one? Bobby?
Yeah, now if you go to the next page, hopefully.
Well, so I think it's in another section.
All right. So I'm sorry. Go right to the district, or the cost centers. We could do it probably just as easy that way.
All right. So I believe it's...
While they're going, sorry.
It's after the profiles that you're trying to go, I believe.
Yep.
Before grant information or after grant information?
Oh, way before.
I think she wants you to click on one of the...
You want me to open up the links? No.
Yeah, you could do, click on that first link if you can. See, that'll pull it up.
All right. There we go.
Yeah, because it's probably, it's in my book, but it's probably not in that. Okay. So you don't need to probably read all this, but this will show you the entire budget. Not broken down by the cost centers.
Okay.
So you'll see everything.
Sorted by DESI function?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's tab three. Yes, right over there. Okay.
Yep. And so for me, the easiest way to read these documents would be to look at the last column, which I think is column K. And if you kind of run down that and you look at the percentage changes, that would be maybe where your questions will come in. Kind of look at that and you'll see, geez, why was there 100% change there? Or why was there, you know, a minus 50% change, whatever? I find that to be the easiest. That'll give you some direction as to how to start to read these. But if you look at the overall on both the level service and the strong budget, then you can go into the cost centers, which will be way back in the book under each school. And that will give you the cost centers. And again, I think the easiest way to read that is just look at those percentage changes. And then some things that I would note in addition to that is that I did have a lot of input this year from the DPW and the CAP department as far as utilities go. So you will see some good increases there. I did increase the legal lines and IT lines. I had some good direction from our city director, Luigi Araviani, and then our school director, Kate Zach. So we're trying to get a handle on all that. And I think they did a really good job. We got a good start on that. And then the level service budget does include things that were added since our preliminary budget of FY '25. So I think unless you wanted me to go line by line, I think those are the major...
I don't think they have the stamina. We still have another executive session, Bobby.
Well, okay. So in any case, I'm happy to go line by line if anybody wants to call in.
We can set up a line-by-line meeting.
There you go.
Okay. Yes, exactly.
Maybe pick a school a day or a department a day. Say, this day, we're going to do this if you want to call in. Okay. So is there anything else you wanted to show us, Bobby?
No, I think that's really about it. I just wanted to kind of give you how I would look at it. And then we'll take questions from there, I guess.
Okay. Could you stop sharing? Well, certainly can. Just so it'll be easier for us to see. Unless we need to see something that's one of those lines. Okay, Member Stein.
I've got a few questions.
I've got a few questions, but before then, just some, some general observations. I think if we extended that staffing line back a year or two earlier, we might not see a net increase, because we had a decrease in Paris for the WINS model, then a gradual build back up, and then a cutting again the last two and a half years. I don't know if we'd actually net up. And I do think we need to talk more about a fundamental change in our philosophy and how we're delivering special education, which seems to be what's embedded in this proposal. The other thing is, by quick math, it looks like the strong budget is increasing positions by about 27 or 28. We cut 22 last year, got two back, but essentially, like, the strong budget is maybe six positions, or different positions, but six positions better than where we were last year, right? So just to put it into perspective, what we're talking about, the level service is sort of like the current state of affairs we have now, which isn't great. And my quick read of the strong budget is that it gets us basically back to where we were, with some changes, it should also help, but we still aren't doing anything to address literacy at JFK or NHS in a significant or appropriate way, and we're doing nothing to address class sizes at NHS. So that's my general take on these. My question is really about the percentages. So in the letter that accompanied it, it says all three views consider 42,311,0014264 is the base. The way I've thought about the base in the past, anyway, is the total amount of money that was appropriated this year from the local appropriation. So that's just the Chapter 70 money and whatever local tax revenue we get, that's the figure that Stan Moulton's obsessed with. That figure, right, any increase over that is a percent change that people talk about. But this number, 42,311,000, appears to me to be more than a 4% increase year over year, even after you add in the $40,000 from January, and even after you add the other ones. Like, I don't know how to read the percentages that are coming through for the 7.7 and the 13. Like, are we saying that the 4% budget is 42,311, and then a 7.7 version is that level services and then the 13 one? And are we referring specifically just to the local appropriation of the Chapter 70 money? Like, what are the percentages actually calculated off of, and what are we specifically referencing?
Bobby, do you want to take that?
Yep. So first, I would say the, the 42,311,143, that number is without that mid-year, or yeah, mid-year appropriation.
But is that plus, plus 4%? Because it's not, it's millions more than that figure. So is it that figure plus times 1.04?
It, it, no, that figure is the, so if you looked at the FY, well, you don't have that. Maybe I could share a document that kind of shows this, that I got from Director Nardi.
Yeah, because the original appropriation last year was 40,870-something thousand, and we've added a little bit to that, from the 100 and whatever thousand in the summer, the 40,000, and then we may or may not be counting any portion of what we just got the other day. But those two things added to that do not equal 42,331,000.
Right, so our mid-year, or not mid-year, but if we went before the mid-year, or the second mid-year appropriation, we would have a base of 40,000, 40,643,791, plus our stabilization fund and the Smith College fund, for a total of 41,16457.
Right, so that would be the base. Yeah, that would be the base, right? That we're going to calculate changes off of for this year.
The, the base would be the number before the Medicare or the Fed stabilization fund or the Smith College donations. So the base would be 40,643,791. That applied would have the 4%, which would bring us to the 42,311,143 for rounding purposes. Then you would add in your stabilization funds that are anticipated and the Smith College, which would give us the 42,686,983. That's all prior to that second appropriation, which we're not sure that is going to be included. I'm, well, I don't want us to, so I'm not going to say anything. But if we went with those numbers, then you would have a base budget of, for FY '25, you would have a base budget of 40,693,791.
Right, but let's be clear, so like in the letter, when we're saying as the base, we're saying the 4% increase with all the caveats you just said over how we want to count last year, excluding the Medicare money and excluding, yeah, et cetera. Okay, so like, but it's what we got last year plus 4%, it's the 4% budget, and that's what we're calling the base, right?
Yes.
So when we say 4% increase, we're saying the base, right? And you're calculating the 7.7 off of that same figure with the caveats, and the 13 with the caveats. But it's not, it's just the local appropriation with the caveats. It's not our total operating budget that is increasing 7.7 or 13, right? Because we have all the millions of other funding that you broke out, right? It's why even at 42 million, when you add in all the grants and everything else, our operating budget's still going to be 45, 46 million. I just want to be clear, because there's a lot of percentages thrown around, to understand like what we're actually talking about with these.
Correct. That does not include any of our other uses.
Yeah, solely operational, solely.
So it doesn't include any revolving funds, any grant funds, any...
Yeah.
Any other ones.
I guess my other question is more for Dr. Bonner, and one of the things that came across to me in the testimony to City Council was that there seems to be a belief that our problems are not only fiscal, but maybe workforce-related or other efficiencies. So I'm wondering how you've projected those sorts of changes into this budget, thinking about both level services and strong, and what you're proposing in the non-financial ways to make these budgets work as best as they can for the schools.
I'm not quite sure I'm understanding your question.
So when you, you've made a number of comments recently that says it's not just the money problem. So I'm saying if it's not just the money problem, what else is the problem? And have you figured out how to solve those problems to help us leverage the money to go further or to meet a need without asking for more money? So if it's not just the money problem that our operations and our service deliveries are facing, what are those problems, and how much are we effectively saving by making changes that you'd suggest in those other areas?
So, I think I'm understanding. So, non-monetary, although it stems from monetary, well, one would be professional development. So if we are training our staff in reading supports, for instance, then the outcomes will be that if we see the greater supports of our students in the classroom or pullouts or whatever, input, push-ins, then hopefully down the road, we may not need an additional interventionist. So right now, we have interventionists in our, in our schools. There is the, the request of additional so that they can break out how those interventionists are actually addressing students' needs. So the focus being on pre-K through two, and then the other great band being three through five, is an example. So the other is training our Paris so that they can be empowered to do small groups that are maybe intentional in terms of working on foundational skills for basic reading skills, or math skills, or whatever the need may be. So that's another thing. Another example is that looking at our special education programming in terms of, this is more of not relieving, which is a, is a poor word to use, but it's, it's a way where now their programming is strengthened by specialized programs that are intentional, working with students who may be on the spectrum, and it allows for our tier, our tier-one teachers or our classroom teachers to then focus on needs of students who may be on tier-one and tier-two. So it's, 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 it's beginning to utilize our current staff in better ways, to be more intentional in terms of how we meet the needs of our students. So I, hopefully, that answered your question, but I'm not quite sure if I, if I did or not, but that is one way to do that, to utilize the resources that you currently have. Maybe requires a little bit of restructuring, a little way, a little, a little different way in terms of how you utilize your current staff to be more effective and efficient.
Thank you, yeah, and I certainly appreciate that, and I see in the, some of the proposed things we're starting to hear about from Director Holloway, where that might play out. But I'm in a harder time understanding some of the professional development and other choices. There's very little professional development money. Even at the strong budget, I think the JFK increase is like $1,000 to $20,000, and there's not enough staff to really provide the time or, you know, we're going to be asking a lot of, a lot of work from our staff who are turning over heavy. I just don't see how that's like an effective way that would really move the lever force or reduce expenses. So I, I don't know, I just, I wanted to give you the opportunity because essentially, part of the reason you asked for half of our requested allocation was because it wasn't just about money. And I'm actually asking, and we can talk more about it on Monday, for you to spell out what these efficiencies are actually going to bring in terms of dollars. So if Matt's restructuring goes through and we agree to do this, what's the actual reduction cost? Because a very similar argument was made when the WINS model was rolled out, and it actually was a lot of debate about it. But again, if we're going to act as if these things are going to save us money, let's see the modeling. Let's see the projection on what it's going to do. How many Paris is it going to reduce in classroom if you move to specialized programs? How many, you know, interventions are we going to avoid if we get our reading instruction under control? But, but again, like, we need to cost-model it out if we're saying it's going to have financial efficiencies in order to make judgments about it, and that's only one part of the equation. There's also a values equation, right? Like, inclusion was embraced in this district in a certain way. What does the retreat from inclusion in some regards look like? And is that something we support? So I'd like to sort of see the data on some of these, these, these claims. Thanks.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes, sorry, I was...
Do you remember your question?
I, I mean, I, I wrote them to you in an email.
Oh, yeah. No, I thought you might have had something new.
Oh, gotcha. I do, but I, I, okay. So, thank you. Yes, I did write them down. I'm, I'm curious, where will the, the programming for students with severe disabilities and medically fragile situations, where will that programming be housed? Will it be housed at a particular school?
Yes. I believe that the medically fragile will be housed at Ryan Road because it is a one-level building. And then I believe I, he has two sites, I believe, for the students who may be on the spectrum.
Matt, he's raising his hand.
And is Matt, oh, is he still with us?
Yes.
Matt, are you still with us?
Yay.
So, Bob, Cassie, can you?
Oh, he's, yeah, he's on me.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm here. I won't speak long, because I know that we'll have a lot of time on budget and property on Monday, but just to answer the question quickly, we are looking at programming for students with intensive needs related to autism at three schools, at Bridge, Jackson, and Leeds. Slight distinctions in each one based on their current student populations, but I think one of the goals that we are trying to move towards is minimal, minimal need for kids to move out of their homeschool zones. So, you know, I think it, we do need to have at least one school that is able to support medical and other sensory needs, you know, visually impaired, things like that, and that, I think historically has been Ryan Road, it makes the most sense for the reasons and more that Dr. Bonner mentioned. But other than that, we're, we're trying to kind of keep the programming similar. And then, you know, you can talk about programming and programs all you want, but, but the students who, the students really kind of are the ones who construct what it looks like, you know, on a, on a year-by-year basis, so that's the piece. And I want to make one, one thing clear, I really appreciated the presentation, but I, I have not been making a strong push in terms of cost reductions from these programs at, at any point, and I, and I don't think, you know, I don't think that's a fair promise to, to make to the committee, and I don't think Dr. Bonner or anybody has. I do think, you know, over a few years, as we start to address our out-of-district numbers and start to consolidate some of our skill within the programs, our programming, we will see cost reductions, but I, I don't want anybody to sort of walk away from this thinking that this is a, you know, panacea, or, or frankly, you know, something that, that could, could save money in the first year.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions, sorry. Dr. Bonner, you mentioned a principal retirement?
Oh, yes.
Is that a retirement that we...
I did. So, Carol Ruffelart from Bridge Street School will be retiring at the end of the school year, and we have posted for that position. It closes on next Friday.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, I, somehow that had exited my brain, even though it's, you know, obviously my, my neighborhood school. Okay, I had sent you the question, similar to, to Member Stein, about looking at this, at the same staffing numbers to FY '16 and '17?
I'm going to have to search for that.
Yeah, I was, I was just looking through, that's what I was doing when you called on me, I was looking through some old budget documents from my previous times on, previous terms on the committee to see if I could find any of those numbers as well.
I believe I have 2018 and 2019, but I don't have anything prior to that. But I'll, I'll work with Bobby.
Okay.
We couldn't get that question done today.
Yeah, no, no, that totally makes sense. And then, yeah, I, similarly on slide 18, which is the, the staffing changes, I'm curious how has educational contracted services gone up and down during that time? Because I know that at times, we have, say, increased staff in order to bring down or eliminate contracted services. And I don't know if it really would be useful to look at out-of-district placement with that as well, because again, like, you know, that, I'm not saying, Director Holloway, that you have, you know, overstated the, the cost-saving measures part of it, but it was a statement that was heavily made by your predecessors and, or especially two predecessors ago, that that, that was the goal, was to bring down out-of-district placement costs, not just costs, but out-of-district placements in general, in order to welcome students back into their home district. And, yeah, so I, I'm, I'm, I know that there's many factors that go into the increase and decrease in our staffing levels, and with that, at times, increases and decreases in other parts of our budget that wouldn't be reflected in those numbers.
So tell me the band of years again, so for 2016 until now?
FY, yeah, FY '16 or seven, like, even if you go, just go back to FY '17, but you said you had '17 and '18, you thought?
I have '18 and '19.
Oh, okay.
So, and then for the educational contracted services for staff, how, what's the band, or how far you want us to go back to review that?
I mean, I don't know, I'm just, you know, I wouldn't know what...
Can we do five years? Or do you want the same amount of time?
I mean, ideally, the same amount of time, because...
It may be really hard to find some of that.
Sure.
Okay, so, and then the same for that, a district, the same timeframe, a district placement?
I would think so. I would think so. I mean, in order to, like, those are the things that I've been hearing during my, what is it now, five years? Yeah, because five years ago today, we shut down. So yes, a little over five years on the committee. Those are the things that I've been hearing in terms of fluctuations in the budget that were impact, impacted by or impacting the number of staff. I mean, obviously, the number of students with disabilities impact those things because, you know, we need to support our students, all of our students. But yeah, so just to kind of, you know, this tells one part of the story, and I think that there are maybe other parts of our budget that tell other parts of the story as well. So that was, you know, I don't know that it's going to be edifying, but that is where my numbers brain would go. And then you didn't go over, actually, Slide 26 from the financial section. It's the capital projects list. Oh, you did? Okay, sorry.
Oh, look at this. You guys said that very quickly.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, and it's, it was just a question of, you know, it's labeled as capital projects. So is that, are those, oh, sorry, I have a couple of questions.
So you have a question. Well, one of the questions I've got to clarify, so...
Yes.
These capital funding projects is all based upon city dollars. It is not based upon anything that may, we may go out for grants to help offset the cost of this. So for instance, you may have asked the question about the JFK roofing...
Yes.
Which we are going to submit the SOI for. Not guaranteed that we'll get the grant.
Right.
But so that would offset this cost.
Right, okay.
But that's not shown in the document. This is actual city costs of what this project would cost if we were to use city funds.
Yeah. So I guess I'm, I guess I'm then also curious, you know, we're, I mean, I'm just looking at the JFK roof replacement because it's a big number, $3 million. So then are we, when we're budgeting out our capital plan, are we budgeting as though we're going to spend that full $3 million? And then if we don't spend the full $3 million...
What happens to it?
Sure.
It's reallocated. But this is a city question that you're starting to ask?
Yeah, yeah.
So now I'm going to push my chair back.
I was, I was starting to look at the mayor. Yeah. Yeah.
And I don't have my capital book with me, but I think it might be in the book for borrowing. So we would have to prove that we had that money. So yes, it would be built in. And then obviously, if we got the MSBA grant, then those funds would be allocated for something else.
Yeah, so reallocated within the capital.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Or not borrowed.
Or not borrowed, okay. And, yeah, okay. And then in the, in the section from Kate Mesmer, that's the part that you didn't go over. That's the part I meant to say before.
Oh, yeah, okay. So for curriculum, it's not wise to put an adoption in a capital.
An adoption of curriculum.
Of a new curriculum. So right now, the suggestion from Kate, which is so wise, is that, and maybe we can't do it this year, but we need to start putting a line in our operating budget for any curriculum adoption. So we just currently did two big ones, and that was really mainly grant-funded. It just was a good blessing at the time. But she has, she, Kate has in her, in her narrative, her budget presentation, she talks about the cycle of reviewing your curriculum. And anytime that happens, you may want to adopt a new, I won't say textbooks, because we don't use textbooks anymore.
Yeah.
But you may want to use a new program, so, and you should have a line item to help to offset that. So if that was a recommendation, it's not in the budget though.
Right.
We can't do it yet.
Well, and so, so she labels those as, as capital expenses. So that was why I was like, oh, can they be paid through the capital budget?
So I, again, looking at the charter or what is recommended, and the mayor could speak to this probably better, and even Bobby, normally, you don't want to use it on projects that may be reoccurring. So like, it is, should be one-time expense or one-time fund, larger projects too. So I have never been in a district where we use capital funds to do something like that. It's usually for like technology. So if we're going to change out our devices, we would do that, but not for the actual program.
Like, so if you were, let's say, buying software, maybe for, you might use capital to buy like the initial software, but then the licensing, you'd want to build into a budget?
Yeah, so I thought that that's what some of those expenses were, was buying the initial software. Was that, was I misreading it?
It's a mixture of both.
Okay, got it.
It's a mixture. But we're not ready yet to do something like that.
I, maybe, Member Hennessy, you can remember, wasn't there a time when there was a line item for those kinds of expenses?
That's my memory.
Yeah.
But that was eight years ago, yeah.
Yeah, like, I was going to say, several, several cuts ago. So, yeah. Also, in the section from Kate Mesmer, there's a question mark next to...
Oh, yes, so that should not have been.
Okay.
But so the recommendation is that, and I'm sorry, I...
Are we no longer having a director of curriculum?
Are you kidding me? No. She's like, you know, no, her salary is in the cost share centers.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's $115, $850, I believe.
Something like that, yeah. So it was just, it hadn't been filled in?
No.
Okay.
And I, and we caught it, but it was caught too late.
No worries. Okay. Those were my informational questions.
Okay.
Member Agnes. I just, I had a couple of comments, actually. First, from what Director Holloway spoke about in cautioning us to think that what he's proposing to do won't necessarily be cost-saving. I was principal when Vins, WINS happened, and it was pedagogical. It was a philosophical thing to think about inclusion in the ways that it was rolled out. It was rolled out with, very awkwardly and without training. And I think there were some real big mistakes made along the way, which for me as a principal was that these places where the students could be served within the school were yanked and taken away. So then I think that if Director Holloway is thinking about having some students with autism programs and the medically fragile, those are, that will make such a difference, not necessarily in the budget, but will make a difference in how schools function. And I think that one of the concerns that I can imagine happening in schools right now without those quote "programs" is that, that there are students who are having difficulty being included. And so I really think that Director Holloway is on the right track, if I may say so, as a former principal, to think about ways that we can stay committed to inclusion, but keeping the kids in the schools with more supports. That's, and I think that I heard you say that it wouldn't necessarily save money, but it's a way to, to pedagogically be more, do it better for the students. Excuse me. The other thing, I was just reflecting as a former principal, and for me, the budget book was really important in getting a picture of each of the cost centers and who is going to school in North Hampton anymore. But, you know, it was five years ago today that I said goodbye to all the students, and we didn't know if we would be coming back. But then I retired in June, so I never got to see them and never got to say goodbye, really. But when I looked at each of the schools, I was pretty gobsmacked about what the high needs percentages are in North Hampton now, way higher than they were. And I want to say it to the public that we need to grapple with this in North Hampton. Bridge Street has 59.8% students in the high needs category, and high needs is the composite of all those. Leeds has 48.6% of the student body who is in high needs. Ryan Road has 47% high needs in its school. JFK has 45% of its students in high needs. Jackson Street has 40% of its students in high needs. And then the outlier is NHS. And then we know that, why that happens is because there's a division at JFK, if the kids go to JFK. Some go to the VOK, some go to PVPA, some go, you know, it's, so their percentage is 35%, which is still pretty high when you think about how sort of the public views the high school as this place where you, you go if you want to get a college, a college prep, that's still 35%. So I, you know, I think public, you need to think about our schools and the needs that we have and the challenges that we have. And I just think about those teachers every day doing that and the principals every day managing it. So I just wanted to thank Director Holloway for thinking about ways that maybe can reduce some of the disruptions and some of the issues that we're going to be facing, and also that we're looking at the reading instruction at the middle and high school. So anyway, those are just sort of comments that I had, but it was, it was illuminating for me as a person who used to be a principal now, five years ago today.
Changing very quickly.
I don't, I think we need to know...
Dr. Holloway, or Cheryl, could I, can I just make a quick comment on that?
Of course, yeah.
Absolutely, Matt.
I realize we're on time and I have next week, so I don't want to, I won't speak too long, but I really appreciate that. And I just, I do want to say that we are trying to do this in a cost, we're certainly not trying to, you know, break open the bank to sort of implement some programming. But I really appreciated the collaboration with Bobby and the Superintendent's Office around, around the work of getting programming started up and also looking at sort of building the skills I know Dr. Bonner was speaking about. We have eight parent educators who are, who are doing in-person RBT training currently, which is really, I think, you know, after our last school committee meeting and talking about some of the, you know, intensive behaviors that some of our students have, I was, I was a little bit, you know, inspired and really gratified, you know, working closely with our, with our union members, you know, to kind of structure a training that was appropriate for them and made sense. And then working with the principals to identify at least one person in each building, you know, to go and get this training. You know, that, we need, you know, we need our folks to have the skills and the support and the training if we're going to do some of these things that we want to do, you know, these ambitious things of programming and phasing off the contracted services work, which, you know, is, is a big deal, and those are really important partners to us. You know, we've been, are grateful for the contracted services because they did, I don't doubt, save out-of-district tuitions. You know, so we're well over the line. I don't know how much further we'd be over that line if we're, if these were tuitions rather than contracted services. And I don't, you know, I don't need to disparage any of that, of that stuff. And on the same note, I just want to say, you know, we have an incredible amount of interest in a few Lord and Gillingham opportunities that we've structured for our special education staff. And, you know, that's, that was really a, I think, a big piece of moving things forward for us on, on the reading front as well. And then my final piece is just, I have a lot of gratitude because I get to be with, we have a district-wide working group that's looking at intensive needs programming across all four elementary schools, you know, caregivers, families, parent educators, teachers, administrators, you know, it's really a nice, nice representative group. And they've been the real, you know, sort of the moral compass of the, of the process and really setting the, helping to set the vision, co-create the vision for this. And then in addition, you know, I get to work really closely with our four elementary principals. We meet every month to talk about staffing and programming. And then we're, we are mid-process or beginning the process of having internal meetings with the Bridge Street, Jackson Street, Leeds, and Ryan Road teams, you know, to really talk about the work and what's the work look like. And it is, it's a little bit daunting, but it is really, it's the right, it's the right way to go to service kids. And, and I think we're, you know, the ripple effect, as you said, Member Agnes, the pedagogical ripple effect of having a team in your building who has expertise and collegiality and a shared understanding of how to support kids with intensive needs, that's going to benefit every classroom in the, in the building because, you know, suddenly you'll have a knowledge base, you know, if you're, you're struggling with a third grade student, for some, you know, you have a knowledge base to go to and get ideas and potentially, you know, supports for that student, you know. So I, I'm really optimistic about it. I'm really enjoying the process. And, and I've been great, very grateful for the collaboration with the business office in particular because this is, you know, this, this is complex and funds have to move across the lines to make this work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Done. Thanks.
Member Weizenfreund.
First of all, really thank you. I know this is a huge amount of work, and so thank you to you and Bobby and everybody who contributed. I mean, this is truly, and I really appreciate seeing all the three budgets and the comparison and the thought you put into that. I guess my first, I have a couple, I have a question just to clarify. So the strategic plan runs from 2024 to 2029, right? In the strategic plan, because I reread them all, you know, in preparation for this. So in the strategic plan, it says that the district improvement plan is an annual document. But when I look at the district improvement plan, it's 2024 to 2027. So could you just clarify that for me, please?
So, thank you, Member Weizenfreund. Did I get that correctly?
Oh, yeah.
So we realize as educators, when you're making change, you can't do it in a year. It takes time. And I, and I think that we spend so much time writing a document instead of actually putting it in action. And so we really did decide, we being, you know, the leadership team, it's like, we're going to make it three, three years. And I was actually encouraging the principals to also look at their school improvement plans similarly. Some may still be annual, and then some may have gone the three-year distance. You'll see that in the profiles. We've had a lot of changeover in our buildings. And so here is an opportunity where the new administrations can come in and work with the school council and the staff to determine what the focus should be. So, but for, for me, knowing the amount of work that has to be done, you can't do it in a year. And we just continue to build and spread. And so I'm used to actually giving some updates annually in terms of where we are. Maybe we need to rethink this or, you know, similarly, what I'm trying to do with the strategic planning, and we are really just in the beginning stages. It was, it was a lot of work for like 10 months just to put that together. And the, there are two objectives that are loaded. And when I say loaded, meaning that there, there was so much thought, and when you break it down in terms of the components and what we're finding out, what we're missing, to be able to put it together before we can even have conversations around these things, we're learning that as we go along. And I will share that in my end-of-the-year report in June in terms of where we are. But that was, that was a good question.
Yeah, no, I understand that, and that makes a lot of sense, you know, operationally, I guess. You know, I always think about align, you know, the budget as a tool to meet the goals, right? Or the objectives, right? I'm used to goals, objectives, anyway, it doesn't really matter, right? But I always look for the alignment. And so now we're thinking about next year's budget. So, and when you did on Slide 27 or 28, I think, the comparison of the three views...
Yes.
So the slide says that both the strong budget and the level services budget continue to meet the needs of the district improvement plan. And I'm wondering, I guess, I don't really understand how that could be true...
How that could be.
Given that the strong budget, given that, given everything we've been hearing from the public about what's going on in the schools right now, and the level services budget is that same budget. So I don't understand how, how they could both be... So I don't understand how, how they could both be meeting the needs of the district improvement. That's my question.
Right. And I understand your perspective in terms of to say, to say that, but I didn't quantify in terms of how well they are meeting those needs.
So I think that's important.
Okay. But I did not, I did not quantify.
Really, really important because, you know, the level services, I mean, the only way that I can see that it would meet the needs of the district improvement plan, again, on first look, right, is that there would, there's, there's one reading and one math interventionist for each elementary, middle school. And I think that is the extent to which it meets in, from where I sit, the district improvement plan. And I think that, you know, I would like to understand really how the money, the budget aligns with the goals. That's all. Thank you.
Member, oh, wait, Member LaBounty and then Member Miller. Member LaBounty first and then I'll come back.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
I think when I've been talking with people about sort of going forward and what the budget means, I think one of the things that I've been hearing is that people are looking for a vision, an overall vision of what it, it means to move forward, even given cuts, if there are cuts, what does that mean? And I think that's a fair question. And it, when I, in thinking about that, that's where I see where that strategic plan and those groups need to come together, right, with the budget. Because if we keep cutting, you know, teachers and things, we also have to think about consolidation of the schools. You know, would that actually be ultimately helpful if we did that, given your cutting? Or is there some other solution that the strategic plan should be looking at to support what's happening? And, and what does that mean? Because I think it's, it's hard to get behind cuts if you don't understand, other than, oh, there's not money, if there isn't that kind of vision or there's a temporary vision. So it's going to look like this for a while and that's going to stink, but then this is going to happen. So I'm, you know, that's what I hope that we can do. I mean, I think it's probably similar to what you're saying, Vice and Friend. So I'm, I'm hoping we can help provide that in some way, you know, so that we can get behind whatever it is we're going to do. I hope.
Member Miller.
I feel like I'm going backwards because I agree with both what both members have just said. But going backwards, I just wanted to respond to something that Member Agna and to what Matt Holloway was talking about. I think all of us were deeply affected by some of the public comment a couple meetings ago in which we learned a lot about what's going on in schools right now and how staff have been injured and about how some of the high need, high risk students, their needs aren't being met. And that I'm just responding because I think it is very important that there be some sort of programming, perhaps separate from the regular classroom for some of these students. And maybe those needs can be met by current staff who are, obviously our parent educators are very dedicated and are receiving extra training. They're already working as hard as they possibly can. And I think to meet the needs of some few high-risk kids on the spectrum is in particular, I think it reduces the risk for staff that we think about alternative programming for them and maybe with current staff. But I just, I really think those high-risk kids need, they need more. So I'm just responding to what both Member Agna and Mr. Holloway said before we, you guys talked.
Member Stein, unless there's someone else who hasn't spoken that.
Yeah, I just want to raise a few things that I really feel compelled to after Member Agna gave us that list of percentage of high needs, which is in there, which is really shocking and, and hard to look at. When we looked at the strong budget positions, Bridge Street had the least amount of additions and Jackson Street had the most. So looking at that from what we know just based on the data, it's hard to wrap your mind around. And I continue to be extremely disappointed with this sort of overall advocacy and balancing of needs across the system and specifically the way in which Bridge Street continues to seemingly not be advocated for in a variety of ways when it has the highest needs and the most amount of, of crises, especially when the teachers have literally been begging us all year. They just sent us an update again. So we really need to have a better holistic vision of what the needs are and how we're going to address them. Similarly, I don't want to see us getting a waiver again to divert Title I money from Bridge Street and some idea of equality to other schools. We really need to invest in that school and in those students and in those educators. We keep losing them because we're not. And it's a, and it's an unsustainable situation. The other thing I want to say is related to the strategic plan and this, this sort of visioning. We talked a bit about this when we passed it. I mean, it was big for us to remove the fiscal stability plan language from it, even though our base budget continues to, to do that, you know. But I'm struck every time I look at it that we don't get down to actual student needs until Goals Four and Five. We start off with net zero. That's the number one goal. And that's a capital goal.
They're not in order.
It's, thank you. Okay, I don't have to say that.
But they are. They literally are in an order on the slide.
That's your perception of priority is not listed in, in order of priority. That's, that's, that's.
But it should be. Why is it number one?
Sure. Yeah. It's a, it's, it's definitely a weird optics.
It's a problem, right? And frankly, you know, even putting the capital spending in here is sort of to say, we're spending a lot of money on you. It's a very weird thing because it's not part of our budget. It's strange to me.
But it is part of.
But excuse me, I have the floor. You have not been recognized. Point of order.
My gosh. When does it stop?
Finish, but then also please don't interrupt other people.
Point of order. I was interrupted. I had the floor. Did anyone, was anyone else recognized by the chair?
Go ahead.
Is that the ruling on the point of order?
Yeah, you may continue.
So I don't think it makes sense for us to look at school consolidation through the lens of an overly aggressive city goal for net neutrality, net carbon neutrality by 2030. We are going to bend ourselves towards that goal in such a way, way beyond the state's goals, way beyond any other goals. And I'm afraid that that's going to push us to a consolidation choice that may not be pedagogically or community-driven. And I want to say that again. I know people saying it's not preference of order, but I heard about, it's number one on the list. We can say it's not prioritized as number one. Same thing, I don't understand why a food program to save money when the state is picking up the tab right now is also like a key goal of our strategic plan. And I understand there's other dimensions to it, but I, I don't see the centrality of learning. I don't see the centrality of all of the pressing concerns that we're getting and I don't see a vision. I see either we're going to continue to not meet the needs of our students or educators and kind of pretend we are if we give a little bit more money, but in a really calibrated way, oh, it meets the goals, but I didn't say how much. I mean, we're, we're playing with semantics when, when we all need to be addressing the issues in the room. And it feels upsetting that we're not taking this seriously. Lastly, you know, we saw it again, like, we know our fiscal cliff is two unfunded contracts and a wins model. That is the heart of our fiscal cliff. We see it in the school choice money that went out to fund that. We see that in the appropriations that weren't raised over time. That's always going to be the problem. And as long as we're running from that, we're going to keep having this Groundhog Day conversation every single year while the needs of our students increase. We need a vision to get out of that and we don't have it. Thank you.
I, I mean, I didn't put together this budget, but I had heard that people had complained or school committee members had complained that there wasn't discussion or they didn't know that about the capital projects. So I believe that's why they were included because there was, and Member Davis, you were on that committee before, there was an idea that, that there wasn't enough information that the school committee got about the capital projects for the schools. So I think that's why they were included in the budget. But again, it's not my budget. It, can't see under this thing. Oh, Member Davis.
Yes, I, two, two thoughts that are, that I was thinking before, but I thought I could just hold, but somewhat in reaction to what Member Stein just said, I'll just say them, is that I thought to myself, hey, are these in order? And then I said, no, these are the five, I think it's five, big things. And, and while they seem a little, hey, shouldn't the kids be first on here instead of this or that? I thought, no, like, for me, I just see all of this is like so inescapably intertwined, intertwined, and they just can't just pull them apart, I feel. To me, the food program is perfectly cool right there because hunger and health, they're not, kids aren't learning if they're hungry. Kids are not learning as well if they're having chips at lunch. And in fact, we all know it's not guaranteed that this money's there at all. We are right on the edge of losing food money and nutrition money and CISA money and whatever farmer money. So this is not to be toyed with as priority in my humble opinion. And be a whole philosophical discussion about the climate, but poor people always are on the back end of, you know, let's put the factory over on the crummy side of town. Like, this is all important for everyone and it affects everybody. And probably later, maybe not in the budget book, but as far as like creative ideas, not consolidation and like this, immediately I think people go to which school is going to get closed or something, which perhaps is a conversation, I don't know, has not been talked about. But like, I think about what other ways of teaching like co-teaching, like different model of a school that attracts people. As far as like numbers of kids going down, what would attract kindergarten to come back and preschool to come back? The teachers in this district are just as creative and amazing as anybody, anywhere. And I'm sure they have ideas about, wouldn't it be cool to do it this way? Can I pilot this this way? It'll bring somebody to the school. And again, maybe it doesn't belong in this nuts and bolts kind of a book, but as far as bringing the numbers up, I'm not sure if that's the purview of the school committee, you know, as far as staying in our lane, but I would be happy to explore that. That's all.
Member Agna.
A couple of comments. I was thinking what you're saying, Member Stein, about the apparent inequity, I guess, in terms of what was asked for, for Jackson Street and what was asked for for Bridge Street. I don't, I don't know. I was going to ask, is that just a wish list that the principals put forward or?
Yeah, so thank you.
Yeah, because I.
Member Agna.
Yes.
So I, it, again, it's a quagmire of the, the, the blame that I'm just not taking the ball and then when I take the ball, I get blamed. So this budget was developed by me putting everything that the principals asked for in the budget. I did not prioritize it. I did not add to it and I did not take away from it. So you're seeing a compilation of what was requested. The other thing is that I keep hearing about Bridge Street School. So now tonight, you've learned that there are needs across the district. I cannot just worry about one school building. The other thing is that I have staff who do not communicate with their principal who put out a statement after the fact of not completing the survey. However, there are many of the requests that are in the mid appropriations, which I really wanted to make clear tonight because it was stated that none of this was in the mid-year appropriations, but that's not true. And so, so right now, the work at Bridge Street School is finding a new principal, first of all, that's the goal, but also working with the climate in that building and the relationship building where the staff communicates with the principal and vice versa. So we will work on that. But it's, it's a shame because there was a survey put out by the principal asking, what should we do? And I have a copy of that survey and it was very, very poorly responded to. And then we get a, 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 a list of requests after the fact, after the fact, about what their needs still are. But we, I just want to remember, we have six buildings in this district, six schools, and they all have needs, every last one of them.
I have one more thing. Sorry about my voice tonight. When we were talking, I was on the strategic plan team and I recall very clearly when we were talking about school buildings, there was the issue of climate and Ben Wild was there, who was really very strongly supporting the idea that we are, our civic buildings are really in trouble as far as the net zero goals. But the other thing is that I think some of us educators on that committee, and I speak to a couple of them that I know, we were not talking about school consolidation just to meet net zero. We weren't. We were talking about philosophical things, about the fact that we have a smaller group of students in North Hampton and we have a lot of models around us in our valley, let alone nationally in the research about how you design schools. So that it was something that we were kind of excited about to think about, an opportunity to think about ways to structure schools differently, whether it means closing schools or whether it means putting together schools, like having magnet schools where there's something to attract people. I know that having been through another strategic plan and there was, there was a lot of discussion about just closing a school, that that was not the way to go about it in our community. But the way to go about it is to really have a vision about how, where students are going to learn best in what settings, in what buildings. And, and look at what's happening around us in our valley even, in the kinds of schools that are, are being designed and opened up. So I wouldn't say that it's all about net zero at all. It was really philosophical and pedagogical, too.
Member Hennessy.
Yes, two things. One is I'm cognizant of the time and that we have some important things to talk about in executive session. I guess a comment, I had a lot of comments or questions, but a lot of them have been addressed. I'm concerned, Dr. Bonner, I didn't realize, I, I understand how stressed out teachers are and I clearly, I think we all do understand, specifically Bridge Street, the level of stress and exhaustion and concern that the teachers have. And I'm now, I forgot too, by the way, the principal was retired. And so I also know that becomes a little bit of a leadership vacuum. And so my hope is that, and I don't know what's happening in the other schools in terms of climate, but my hope is that recognizing that, you can look at data, knowing that there's going to be, there will be teachers who are frustrated or don't have enough time or don't do those surveys. time or don't do those surveys. I get it. I'm not saying it's right. I just understand that it happens. And that you can, or your team can say, okay, I get this is what we got, but knowing what we know about Bridge Street, I think we actually need more than what they're requesting. And so for me, I really hope that when, as we move forward, that you look at Bridge Street and the other schools, again, I don't know the climate in the other schools, and say, okay, I don't think I'm getting the full picture from the principal and the teachers. I think they might need more, given what we've heard, the data we're seeing, and the high needs that we're seeing. So that's something I hope you could, you know, continue to do. I appreciate that.
Can I ask a question? I'm just trying to understand the staffing numbers. So, you know, when we completed the budget last summer and in continuing to talk about it and even tonight, I think we talked about a loss of 20 positions. But this, if I'm reading it correctly, between 24 and 25, it shows a loss of 9.3 total. And so about, I'm just trying to understand, you know, how did we, how did, and we gained paras? So how did we mitigate the loss? So that was the estimate, that it was going to be 20. How did we, how did we mitigate those losses? And what positions ended up being lost and which were saved?
Which were saved or restored during the course of the year?
And there were the two mid-year paras, so that's two of them. But I'm trying to understand the other positions.
All right. No. So I need time to, because I can't, I'm at the point where I can't really digest. So just remember that we had two, actually, we had two appropriations, additional appropriations. One was specific for special ed. And then another was two additional paras for Bridge Street School. But then there were also other additions that came back, some restorations. And so I need to kind of look and pull those lists.
Additional Chapter 70 funds.
Yeah, the additional aid that came in. Yeah, we had a lot of different, all those lovely appropriations that worked with us. So I have, I need to take the list that we had in terms of the reduction, because even though we cut positions, we only actually laid off four individuals. And now it's three because one is being recalled potentially. So I just, I don't want to say something and it's not accurate. So let me just take time to digest that and respond to that.
Sure. Want us to have like a clear understanding of what...
Because there are additions through the year.
Okay. Okay, so what's, oh, Bobby, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I was just going to say that we got to remember that since the original budget, we also had additions, like Emily mentioned, the additional Chapter 70 funds. And there was a few other bumps there that we got after we had originally started the budget. And then, you know, we added into this year. So we added positions into this year due to need. So that's a part of that piece there. It's just a change in how we, you know, you had your first budget, right? And then you added the, we got an increase, and then we got another increase, and then we got the Chapter 70 increase. And then we got the mid-year appropriation of the $40,000, and then we got the end of the year, or towards the end of the year appropriation of this latest one.
Right, but that's not in this...
And then even before that, we added positions due to need. So that all plays into it. It's just all.
Okay. Thank you.
Chapter 70 was 192, 400.
We have to vote to extend.
Oh, yeah. And I don't, I'm not sure we would see that again this year. That kind of bump. Doesn't seem likely based on the information coming out of this state.
That's true.
Yeah. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend our meeting until 11:30.
Second.
I'm just being seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections?
No.
One objection? Member Hennessy? No objections? Yes? Okay. Okay, so let's try and wrap up this discussion if we can, because we do, and Leila is waiting to join us. So, Member Weizenfreund.
Yeah, so very briefly, I think Member Hennessy said it really beautifully. You know, I understand, Dr. Bonner, that you have all the schools to worry about and all the schools to think about, and that I would, I would want you to also look at the data and say, if somebody's not recommending enough, or if somebody's recommending too much, that you exercise your authority and your vision to say, hey, let's talk about this, right? I looked at your data, you've got X percent of high-needs students, and why are you not asking for X, Y, and Z, right? Or vice versa. So I really, I need you, I feel like I need to rely on you to do that, right? And I appreciate your bringing in folks and getting all of their opinions, but you're the boss, right? And you get to say to them, you know, I agree with this, or I don't agree with this, or I think we should make some changes. And that's not, you know, meant in any kind of, you know, anyway, that's, I think that's clear. And I think, you know, the only reason we're talking about the strategic plan now is because we wanted to align with the budget priorities. And I have to say, as somebody, you know, a couple of weeks ago, reading the strategic plan for the first time, it would, it would be helpful to say, these goals or these objectives are not ordered by priority, right? Or something like that.
That was said when I presented the, when I presented the strategic plan.
But is it in the actual plan? Because when I read it, like, it just looks like, oh, this is priority one, this is priority two. Right? So it's, it's not obvious to somebody just reading, reading the plan, and I wasn't here. I wasn't here then.
Yeah, it was said orally.
Yeah, and at some point, and I don't know if we have time for this tonight, but Member Stein, I'm very interested what you said about the two unfunded contracts and the wins program. So if there's a way to explain that quickly, great. And if not, you can educate me on my own time. Thank you.
So Member Stein, you have, you have the floor, but maybe that would be a larger discussion.
Yeah, we could have a bigger discussion. Just real succinctly, I'd say that the annual appropriation from the city's contribution, the local contribution, didn't increase enough to build into those costs on a recurring basis. And so to fill the vacuum, school choice was overspent. So like, that is the, and over time, that compounds. So that's sort of the root of the problem. That's all the red lines on that sheet. I'll try to be real brief, too. I know we have to move on. I just wanted to highlight a few pieces quickly. I appreciate Member Hennessy and Member Weizenfreund's comments about the need for leadership to oversee what's being asked across the district and make difficult choices and not simply accumulate a list of suggestions. And I really want to put a fine point on this, not to be difficult, but because I think it's important. And tonight, I gave, I've been, we've been hearing a lot from the superintendent that it's not just about money, and there are other efficiencies and there are other problems, whether it's staff not showing up, or staff not doing this, or not filling out surveys. We heard it again. And I gave her an opportunity to explain to me how those things impact the budget and what plans are in place to recognize some savings and efficiencies from them. And the answer I got tonight, the only area that was really identified was around separate programs. And then the Director of Student Services says, hey, it's not going to save us money. Don't look at it as a budget saver. So I really feel like we continue to get a story about why we don't need money and other things pointed to as the problem, but we actually, you know, it's sort of like calling the bluff. Okay, if that's true, show it to me. And the opportunity tonight was given, and it wasn't shown. And I think we need to think about that as we move forward. So I'm pretty frustrated by it. And I imagine some of you are as well. There's one other small point I wanted to make on the budget. I'm not going to remember it. We'll have more time, other opportunities. Thanks.
I think that my next report in the April meeting, I will share staff attendance, and I will share how many staff members are on leave, as well as share those who go into no-pay status. And I will also share our vacancies so that you could have a full personnel report in terms of what we are dealing with in our district.
I remember the...
Hold on. Member Hennessy?
I was going to ask if I could adjourn, or should I move to executive session?
We'll need to make a motion. How quick?
It's really quick. It's just the other point I forgot, which was, you know, we talked about the $40,000 positions. We heard a grievance. What steps were taken to engage that climate at the district level? What steps were taken to fix the situation in Bridge School? If it's a climate problem, what steps were taken? So I hear a lot of accusations. I want to hear what leadership was done to respond.
Member Hennessy, were you going to...
Make a motion.
Do I move to adjourn, or do I move to executive session?
No.
I'd like to move to go to executive session pursuant to MGLC 30A.
You need to move the mic closer to you.
To comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, purpose seven, for the purpose of reviewing and approving executive session minutes to comply with the open meeting law, GLC 30A 22FG.
There are second...
And...
There's two, yeah, two purposes?
There actually may be three purposes.
Three. That's another purpose, seven. Oh.
There should be a minutes purpose.
This is the exception. Oh, yeah, yeah. And pursuant to MGL 30A 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, purpose seven, for the purpose of reviewing and approving executive session minutes to comply with the open meeting law, GL 30A 22FG. And that's it.
I second it.
Those are all the purposes? Okay, motion's been made by Member Hennessy, seconded by Member Agna. Any discussion going into executive session? All those in favor of going into executive session, say aye. Any objections? Objections? Okay, we will be going into executive session. We will be adjourning from executive session and not coming back into open session. So anyone who's still with us, we'll say good night to you now. Thank you.